It is December 9th, 2024. It is 6:00 PM and I'm calling this regular meeting of the Groton Board of Education to order. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance and I'll ask our student representative Melanie to lead us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As I previously announced, I am resigning as the Chair effective upon the selection of a new Chair this evening. Just commitments in my life have made it more and more difficult to to really devote the time that I feel is necessary to that role. I will be staying on the Board. It's been a privilege to work with all of you and it will be a privilege to continue working with you. So at this point, I will open nominations for the position of Chair of the Board of Ed and I would like to nominate Beverly Washington.
Second.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for the position of Chair? Okay, hearing none, without objection, nominations are closed. I just want to say that, you know, Beverly has been Chair of the Board previously. Over the past year, she's really been the co-chair. And I know she's going to do a fantastic job. And we're very fortunate to have her. She's on the Board of Learn. She's been very active with CAPE. And I think it would be an excellent choice. Is there any other discussion?
Oh, an excellent choice, the only choice in my view.
I move the Chair Cast one vote for Beverly Washington and the Lecturer by Acclamation.
Okay, without objection. She's so elected by acclamation.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I hope I can live up to everything Jayden said. But the two most important things for me is trust and communication. So we have to have that on this Board if we're going to move forward. And if I don't answer right away, you email me, don't forget, I do have a life other than on the Board of Education. But just give me a chance to get back to you and thank you for believing in me and I hope I can live up to whatever in your mind you think I'm supposed to be doing. So thanks again. The next order, since I was Vice Chair, I'm going to have to step down and we need a nomination for Vice Chair. So we're opening the nominations for Vice Chair.
I'll nominate Adrian Johnson.
Oh, you beat me.
And I won't wait.
I'll second that.
You're second, so.
I'll second.
Sorry, Andrea. So Ian nominated Adrian and is seconded by Mike Whitney. Any discussion, comments?
Are you sure? It's a gateway, bro.
So we're closing nominations and all those who favor Adrian, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Propose, extensions?
All right.
Thank you, Bev. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. I'm honored.
Be working beside you.
Get me as well. Thank you.
And the next on the agenda is recognition and participation of visitors and delegations.
We don't have anybody today.
The next item is comments from citizens in regard to agenda items and other subjects of concern that lie within the jurisdiction of the Board of Education. This is the portion of the agenda where the Board welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Board members will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation. Cannot respond during the comments of citizens important of the Board. Citizens should make their presentation from the podium and state their names and address for the record. Do we have anybody?
Could we get a microphone? Oh, she has one.
My voice is so loud. If it wasn't for recording, you wouldn't even need a microphone, so. We'll use it to make sure everybody gets, hears it. So my name is Portia Bordelon. I live at 2024 Jefferson Drive, Groton, Connecticut. For full disclosure, Ian Thomas is my husband. For full disclosure, I'm a Fitch High School graduate. For full disclosure, I was a para in the Groton Public Schools in the medically fragile room at one point back in the day when I was a stay-at-home mom. And I, you know, I'm excited to be here to talk because I'm very passionate, as you know, about education. First, I just want to congratulate Bev for being on. Bev is actually, it's interesting to go back. I graduated from Fitch in 98. Bev handed me my diploma. I was good friends with her daughter in high school through track and cross-country. I spent almost all my time with Portia, actually. Her name happens to be Portia as well. I'm excited also to see, so congratulations to you, Bev. I'm also excited to see Adrian Johnson, who was definitely one of my top members. I know that you stated, you know, Bev was your only choice, but I definitely, Adrian was somebody that I was really convincing to join this Board because I felt he'd have a lot to bring and a different view that wasn't being represented. With that, I'm here. I'm very concerned about the article in the Examiner about Groton Public Schools pitched tutoring raffles and accountability to address the low test scores. I know for the new members, you guys are kind of being handed this and this is something that you guys can work over the next, you know, several years to improve. But we need to get back to what your mission states, which is teaching and learning. I kind of, you know, I reached out to a few of my friends that are teachers in and out of the district and around other districts when they read this article and got their opinions and thoughts. The teachers are working with very little support and very little help and financial support. They really are like first responders on ground level. Most times, we can't even get pares in there and they have to continue forward and deal with a lot of different things that are going on in our culture, our community at the time. And so my hats go off to those teachers and what they have to deal with. As a person who's come here and spoke about the honors level courses at Fitch High School, do you hear me now? Do you hear me now? Honors level courses are needed at the high school level. We cannot continue on the track and the trajectory that we are on if we truly are educating our children. If our lowest level is college prep, which in fact, as a person who speaks very openly, the word college prep to me is an insult. Why would that be an insult? I see your face. Why is that an insult? Not everybody that leaves Fitch High School goes to college. So why should they be subjected to college-level classes? They should be meeting the standards of workforce readiness and possibly college. We should look at ways to change that class, in fact, and say something like career and workforce readiness as well as college entry level enhancement. By putting kids that are already at a lower level that normally would have been general in a college prep class, it's kind of a joke. I thought it was a joke. I've been speaking about it since the change happened seven years ago. It's a concern and this Board, and I implore our new leaders on this Board to look at that. You cannot have a continuum of education which is a linking block like math. And then you look at the scores that were presented here online without having the middle block, the feeder program that enhances that. You have to do that. It is indicative to have honors level courses. The science level, I'll speak openly because my son is no longer in the school. Both of my kids are gone. We were met with roadblock after roadblock after roadblock with injustice and infrequency. When you look at, like, I come before you often asking about your career counselor, part-time career counselor for how many students? I look at other districts, less students, full-time career counselor. Teaching and learning, get back to that message. If you truly care about those SAT scores, ACT and even ASVAB scores, get yourself a full-time career counselor. The access and accessibility to pre-SAT program and build up to the test-taking, almost not existing. At one point, they offered a class during the day. My son tried to get in. They said they didn't have any more room. What are you supposed to do? Constantly, this article talks about, oh, the, you know, the children that are getting free. I'm tired of hearing about free and reduced lunch. Tired of it. Stop blaming the scores on the people on the backs of the children who don't deserve it the most, who need the help enhancement. Stop blaming it on our most critical students who are in IEPs and special ed for your scoring. And I'll speak openly. My son had an IEP. One had a 504 and I had to fight every step of the way to get to what he has. Why did I have to fight? Because they didn't give him anything. My son probably now is in the upper level. He was the only student at the time. I had to fight for that. You know what they told me in middle school? Mrs. Bordelon, we don't have anybody to push into that class in middle school to help him. I said, well, that's a problem that you should be proud of. Find him to help. Got to high school, they didn't have the tutors. Oh, we have tutors, Mrs. Bordelon. Not for calculus. Our tutors we hired are not trained in calculus. At one point, Mr. Brown was privately tutoring Aiden a couple of days a week for a short time when he had free time. We were told, Mrs. Bordelon, we have the Falcon Academy. Okay, well, he has an IEP. You have an individual education plan and requirement by the state to provide high-level service to students on their level where they're at. Individual education plan, use that word for everybody. Even the kids that are not in special ed. That should be your goal as a district. And it's not. We're not meeting the needs. Students overwhelmingly are not getting the support that they need and those kids that you call the free and reduce, you're right. They are not meeting the grade because their parents can't afford private tutors like I was able to. If it wasn't for that, my son would not be on a full ride to Maine Mayor Time Academy if it wasn't for my advocacy and my husband's advocacy and that's why he chose to run. When he went back looking at getting a master's in special education, he was tutoring, working over at East Lime Schools and brought back a program that we have here now called TASK. I advocated for it because I was publicly elected and he brought the knowledge that we didn't have that can help 504 students, military kids. There was non-existent programming. We can do better in Groton. We have the resources. Let's get our heads together and make it happen. These scores need to come up. I don't know how, that's not the first agenda on your paper tonight. 25% and then, oh, well, we're a high-needs district. We know that. We've known that forever. Then they say, well, we got transient military kids. My kids were those military kids too. And we were local. We know that. Figure it out. Come up with a plan. How do we have tutors that are hired that can't do calculus, but yet overwhelmingly, we keep offering these higher-level courses, but we can't meet the needs? Southern Academy is a great option if a student doesn't have a self-esteem issue or doesn't want to go meet with a peer and expose that they're not understanding how to learn, you know, that's pretty big at 15 years old to say, I'm not getting this. Now let me ask this cool peer that's getting it to help me. And that's the only option available? Well, Mrs. Bordelon, that's all we have. When I called other districts, they said, that's unacceptable. And no offense, Mrs. Doolittle, I know we've had our struggles and I'll speak openly. I've been in meetings where I was told, you know, by Mrs. Doolittle herself, that in fact, you know, I don't think the problem is that, you know, Aiden's IEP, I think he's in two high-level classes. Maybe he should change a few. My husband was there to witness. My concern is, that's where you should want to be. Just because a kid has an individual education plan, doesn't mean they're not college-bound. And in fact, they just have a different way of learning that Groton hasn't figured out and they need to figure it out. And they need to provide the services to make sure everybody can succeed. And that should be our goal here. How do we not have the tutors? I looked at other things in different states and what they did is they added programs where high-level teachers, you might have a middle school teacher who can teach higher-level math. They offered them a stipend, an extra check on top of their salaries if they wanted to come teach a math club or an enrichment program for pre-SATs. We need to start thinking outside the box. We have a concern here. Red flags are going off, sirens, let's go, math and science. And we need to look at our curriculum. A lot of folks, even teachers I've spoke to who won't come up here and publicly speak about it. Our curriculum is not continuum. We need to be doing better to make sure those kids overwhelmingly at times at middle school level, we get there and they'd say, mm, these kids aren't ready. High school, they get there, they're like, mm, what happened in middle school? There needs to be more collaboration to make sure everybody's on the same page and those teachers are getting the support at ground level. You cannot fill the lower-level classes with a ton of kids and offer no support and then say, we barely have 50, you know, however many percent of the para is not available. I was a para. There were days I've moved from one kid to the next kid to the next kid. Meanwhile, I had two kids, both behaviors, trying to mediate, trying to keep the class calm so the teacher could teach. But also making sure those students are allowed to be there and deserve to be there to learn at their level. We have to figure it out. We cannot keep funding enrichment programs and saying you're worrying about the morale of the teachers and sending them off in enrichments and learning in Hawaii and here and there and paying for those, but not paying for high-level tutors. Those are great. Those should only be happening if and when we have done everything to exhaust the support at the ground level. Those programs shouldn't happen. You know what? If I'm a teacher and the true enrichment happens, if you really want to teach and learn, your goal is to make sure those students, your obligation, like I left my work today feeling fulfilled that I reached my goal. As a teacher, when you walk out of there, your job is to make sure those kids are passing and excelling at what they're being taught and they have all the tools. That's the morale. The support happens day to day, not in Hawaii, not in Richmond. If they're certified and they come here ready to teach, they're ready to teach. And if they're older teachers that have been here a while, they even have more skills. The enhancement of those enrichment programs are a nice thing to have if we can do it. But you can't say you're going to cut our tutors and fund other programs and then people are going off on all these vacations and doing things which is wonderful, but then not supporting high-level tutors. Let's get back to teaching and learning. Let's get back to getting those honors classes back here. Let's look at renaming that class that's college prep, which is insulting when our college success rates of leaving aren't even that high. And you're calling, you're telling everyone, go into this college class. That's insulting. Someone's dream might be to be a well-graduated B and we should help them get there, not in a college prep course. Let's get back to teaching and learning.
Thank you, Mrs. Bordelon. Anyone else would like to address the Board? Anyone online?
No one online has their hand raised.
Okay, thank you.
Next is response to comments from citizens. Anyone would like to respond to this, Bordelon?
I just thank you for coming out and sharing your thoughts and I look forward to working with the Board on addressing many of those issues.
Okay.
So this week on Friday, Fitch is participating in the statewide pajama day to support the Connecticut Children's Foundation. So the Kiez Club will be collecting $1 from anyone who wants to participate. And the money will go to the Connecticut's Children's Center for Cancer and Blood Disorders. Also, the Student Leadership Club is finalizing a holiday spirit week for next week. And so everybody's getting very excited for a break and there's lots of holiday spirit atmosphere.
Did you get any feedback from what you talked about last meeting about the Chromebooks and the water filter?
Yes, I heard that they're working on that. It sounds like there was like a Chrome extension kind of problem. And I've already noticed that my Chromebook's already been working better. I'm very glad.
And what about the water filters?
I actually saw people working on the water fountains last week at school, so that was very nice to see and I'm glad that it's being that.
We've got the right people in the room hearing this to make sure that it happens.
Thank you.
I don't want your concerns to go unheard.
Thank you.
The next is Superintendent Bill.
All right. So I have some guests to introduce you to that are going to be talking to you a little bit about our early childhood program that we currently have and some things that we're aspiring to do in the future. And I wanted the Board to weigh in on this and start thinking about this, but it's always, we've always kept Mary Morrison as a school and it certainly has supported Ernie and the Food Service Program and Treehouse and our Early Childhood Assessment Team. And we always wanted to keep that as a school building because we wanted to make sure that if we were ever in the need to extend our early childhood program or had the need because of the number of students that we are receiving, that we would have a place for them. So Denise Doolittle and Karen and Jen and Meg are here to help us and talk to us a little bit about the current program that we have and we were very proud of it. We were the first district in the state to come up with a transition to kindergarten and Meg Walker was really our first teacher of the program. It was one, so one, you know, one full-day program for the whole district and that was because of the age students were coming to us at the age of four and maybe not turning five until December 31st or January 1st. And our teachers had always come to us and said, that's really young. And now the state in its infinite wisdom has changed the the starting date for kids to the September, they had to be five by September 1 to come to kindergarten. And we were in a really just right place to transition some kindergarten teachers at each school and to have Meg Walker's leadership and Jen Theryll as our social worker for early childhood to help support the program and it's really gone well. But I'm going to turn it over to you all because you're the experts in this and you can talk to us a little bit about the program and some of the ideas that we have.
Thank you, Superintendent Austin. So I'd like to introduce you to the folks who are here tonight. Karen Hyatt, I think this is your first time meeting Karen.
Oh, thank you, Jen. Thank you very much, Jen. Karen Hyatt is our supervisor for early childhood programs and Karen comes to us from the Brooklyn Public Schools. She started this summer. And Karen actually has a background as a behavior analyst. She's a board-certified behavior analyst as well as a special ed teacher. And Karen has taught in a variety of settings, including some self-contained classrooms with students with more significant disabilities. So we're happy, very happy to have Karen join us. We also have Jen Theryll, who is our early childhood social worker. Jen supports teachers, students and families at the preschool kindergarten level, both at Thames River and Mystic River. And we have Meg Walker, who was our pioneer for the Transition K program. Meg worked with Susan and Nadine very closely to create the Transition K program. And this summer, I really couldn't, Karen and I couldn't thank her enough. Meg trained the additional three teachers who were hired for TK, which we affectionately call Transition K. And she shared just a variety of resources that she has in terms of her schedule. She has researched curriculum, all sorts of tips, tricks and a little bit of the play-based learning initiative from the state that you'll see in the presentation this evening. So I really want to thank Meg, Jen and Karen. The three of them are leaders in the early childhood area and our district is very fortunate to have them.
I'd also like just to add to that, that it was our preschool teachers and our kindergarten teachers that came together with Meg in designing the curriculum. And really, the three of the four were really experts in that and had worked side-by-side with Meg. So for them to take that on, it was just, it really was a smooth transition. And then they'll possibly go back to kindergarten next year, but we'll, we'll see. We've got some ideas.
So Karen is going to get us started and if you recall, as Susan just alluded to, this is the first year that we have worked with our new legislation. For those of you who are new to the Board, who might not recall, we did a lot of work prepping the Board in our district last year in terms of the change to the kindergarten eligibility age. So this is the first year that students in Connecticut had to be five by September 1 in order to enter kindergarten. So with that in mind, Karen's going to lead us through a presentation of how things are going and some ideas that we have for the future.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So we just wanted to give an overview of what the current programming looks like for early childhood. And so right now, this is what it looks like. Basically, we have five kind of programs in district. The first, and we'll talk a little bit through the slides about each one. But we have ECAT, which stands for the Early Childhood Assessment Team, and that's currently at Mary Morrison. We have Integrated Preschool. We're in the next slides, you'll see, we're going to hopefully continue current programming for that. They're at Thames River and Mystic River right now. Early Otters is our specialized programming for students with more intensive needs for their IEPs. And that is right now housed at Mystic, Mystic River. Pre-kindergarten is currently at Thames River and Mystic River. And then Transitional Kindergarten, which I couldn't do without Meg here, so she's going to have a great spiel about that later. But they are actually at four of the schools, Mystic River, Thames River, NEA and CK.
So Charles Barnum Children get a seat at one of those programs if they were eligible.
Yes. Yep. So we just kind of wanted to go through and talk a little bit about each program a little bit. So ECAT really serves as our bridge between the birth-to-three services in our school district. They do the transition meetings. They are the ones that initially meet the families. They have another PPT1, we call it. It really is just a meeting for meeting the family and if they need any further evaluation and planning that. And then they will do the observations, the evaluations, they write the reports. And then we come back for another, a second PPT and they plan the IEP if they're eligible and what services are best for that student. They also screen and evaluate students who may be referred, who don't come through the birth-to-three process that are in pre-kindergarten. And they also provide weekly speech groups for students who are eligible ages three to five as part of their IEP. These students are the ones that wouldn't meet criteria necessarily to go into the integrated preschool, but do meet the criteria for that weekly speech group. It comprises of two, a special education teacher and a speech pathologist right now and they do a fabulous job over there. So that's ECAT. Our integrated preschool really are for students who either have an IEP for special education services or they meet the criteria for peer models. So each three to five-year-old is screened, come for a screening in Groton. And based on what the results of the screening, they get, you know, kind of an assessment result. And if they meet peer models, they would go into the program to serve as like kind of a typical peer and then integrated. It's a really nice model for socialization and everything like that. So it's either students with an IEP or a peer model. Students are three to five years old. We have 12 sessions, so we have six classrooms, three right now at Mystic, three at Thames and they are half-day programs. So they're 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM. There's 192 slots total in those two programs for both students with special education services and the peers. And like I said, they're at Thames and Mystic right now. With that, we have an Early Otters program, which is really our more intensive specialized program for students three to five years old. There is, there's one classroom right now, but two sessions, AM and PM. And it's about 10 to 12 slots total in the program. So like five to six in the morning, five to six in the afternoon. And it's a really nice model with the integrated preschool because they do get to go into the integrated preschool rooms, get time for socialization, work on those skills with, you know, kind of typical peers or that criteria, would that meet that criteria? All right. Our current pre-kindergarten, and you know, this is as we talk, this is probably what you'll see the biggest change or one of our ideas for next year. But right now, it's for students who meet the criteria for kindergarten readiness skills. So again, they'll come to that screening and based on those results, if they meet a certain criteria, they will get put into this program for really learning all of those pre-readyness skills for kindergarten. You can, it's with or without previous preschool experience. So some come with it, some come without. And it's for right now, this school year, students who turn four within the calendar year of 2024. Next year, you'll see it's a little bit different just because of a legislative change. Right now, we have four sessions. So we have a classroom at Mystic and we have a classroom at Thames who split at AM or PM session. So there's four total and we have 64 slots for students within the district. Now I'm going to hand it over to Meg, who's going to talk all about her baby transitional kindergarten.
I just want to first thank the Board for all of your support for the past, this is my sixth year here in Groton doing transitional kindergarten and I appreciate all the support and what you guys did to found this program because as an educator, it's been just the best opportunity. Transitional kindergarten students, I always say, are the happiest kids in the district. I was really able to create a program that meets the needs, meets these children where they are and gives them the gift of time. I had been a kindergarten teacher prior to starting the program and seen how those youngest students were struggling, many needing a second year. And when you need a second year and your first year struggling, puts a bad taste in your mouth for education. So this gift of time has really helped our students to come in and have a great first year. Their needs are being met. We're learning at a pace that works for them individually. And then I'm able to extend and push them further and see real growth and success. So we're building that foundational knowledge that gets them ready for kindergarten, transitional kindergarten students coming with a lot of needs, either academically or socially, emotionally. And then we're building those skills for them so they enter kindergarten with a very strong foundation with a focus on both those pieces. In TK, I use a very play-based approach, both in center work as well as play, open playtime and, you know, getting them outside, working on those. working on those self-regulation skills, working on pre-literacy, pre-math skills. And then when they're ready, especially this year with the opportunity for more kids to be involved in TK, I've got some who are ready to read and we can work on those skills as well and challenge the kids who are ready for that challenge. But every kid's met academically and socially where they are. And then I've also had the great experience of seeing my kids as they move up in the grades with that confidence and the skills. You see them come into TK shy and quiet, nervous, or maybe lacking in some area. And now I see them in second, in third grade and they're confident. When I see them, you know, the progress they've made. I talk to teachers, I'm like, oh, I had him in TK. They're like, he was in TK? He's my top student. I'm like, because he was in TK, he's your top student. They have the opportunity that they really know themselves. And so it's been, it's a great program. And then this year, we've extended it out. We have three other teachers teaching it and they're giving me the same feedback. They love their jobs because they're able to meet the kids where they are and then challenge and extend with them through that play-based model, which Jen's gonna talk more about.
So I don't know if we've discussed it before at a board meeting, but there was a, with the change in the age for kindergarten, there was also a play-based learning legislation piece. So now in Connecticut, preschool, pre-K, TK and kindergarten must provide play-based learning on a daily basis. And so we've been working with an outside consultant and doing some training last year and this year in preschool and kindergarten. And so I just kind of put some ideas on here of different things that can be done and have been done with play-based learning in our district. A lot of the literature in this change in the legislation is based on developmentally, these kids learn best through play at a young age. And so while we're trying to enhance their academics, we need to build up our play skills and making sure that it's really planful and how we're going to target the things that the kids need, whether it's more vocabulary and language, or if it's the SEL skills and conflict resolution. What, one of the pictures was actually like a science investigation, which really bridged out an entire literacy block that was about animals and hibernation. But it led into speakers and field trips outside on the grounds and the kids making things. And so really tying all those things together so that the kids are remembering the things that they're learning tied into the curriculum. Really having more with what Meg was talking about, the centers, TK was like the perfect place to have this start out because it's already being done in her classroom all the time. And really having those engaging centers where kids are able to be hands-on with the different learning tools and really planning it out aligned with the curriculum. I put on a, one little, I love this little loose parts picture. Loose parts is really becoming something I'm reading about a lot when it comes to play-based learning because kids are having to use their imagination, but also being able to stretch what they think a lot of like the toys are when you give kids like a cash register, they can only use it as a cash register. If you give a kid a cucumber, they can only use a cucumber. But when you have a lot of different hands-on materials, they're using their imagination to play and they can use it into different ways. So it's just another thing we're implementing in all the early childhood classrooms. All right. Thank you. And I mean, Meg and Jen are here today and as you can see, we're all very excited and enthusiastic about this. But it's really the whole team. It's a great early childhood team. And I think if they all could be here, they would. You know, hearing the speaker before, you know, I think especially my experience so far in Groton, the early childhood educators love their jobs. They, you know, they really, and they're so committed. It's, it makes my job very easy. But it's also, you know, it's really exciting and this is where it all starts, where all the learning starts. So, you know, we're just going to try to enhance that moving forward. So with that, our, kind of our proposal or idea for next year, it looks like really continuing ECAT services as it is at Mary Morrison, kind of continuing the current programming there, same with Integrated Preschool for next year at least. And they would remain at Thames River and Mystic River. Early Otters, we're hoping will transition with us over to Mary Morrison. Because our idea is really to merge our pre-kindergarten rooms with our TK rooms. Cause we've seen how successful they are with the full day program with the kind of a little bit more rigorous curriculum that Meg and the team have created and making them three full-day classrooms, which would be really nice. We would still have 16 to 18 students per session. And then, you know, we're hoping if we can look into, and I know Susan's already on it. We all are looking for grants, maybe expanding that even more so we can start to offer more of a universal pre-kindergarten for the kindergarten readiness. And again, it goes back to like that teaching and learning. This is where it all starts and expanding it. I think we're all really excited about it. And you know, we've seen how much success the programs have made that we just want to continue that. We would move these transition to kindergarten, what we would call the pre-K TK merge to Mary Morrison hopefully. And start to build kind of an early childhood center there next year. So.
Taking a tour with Sam Kilpatrick and just marveled at how well the building has been kept up. And they have a whole section of six classrooms that were dedicated for preschool and K, pre-K and K back in the day. And I just met with Melissa Jenkins from the State Department. She's in charge of Alliance Districts. And we had a wonderful two-hour meeting and shared some of the things that were happening in Groton. She, you know, had some connections with Anne Marie and Anne Marie's amazing work in East Hartford and what she was able to accomplish. And when we mentioned this, she talked about Smart Start, which is a preschool program and she was going to contact me as soon as she finds out more about this grant opportunity that helps really essentially help grow almost a universal pre-K experience. So imagine that every child in Groton, between the grant that we get for early childhood that supports Riverfront and Head Start programs are ECDC, EDC, it sounds like a rock band. But and then to have a program of our own, you know, that we could nurture and have a kind of an early childhood center, you know, would be really exciting. But we thought start small with what we have and, and grow it. And, but we have the space, the resources. Karen's administrative, maybe a teacher leader, you know, who could help support it. And, you know, we just wanted to introduce the concept to you. And it would also alleviate, I think you've heard from both Thames River and Mystic River and you've seen the school that Mystic River real, they really have a lot of challenges. They have some of our most significant programs and the, you know, the largest number of students. And I think if, if we could help support and move some of those programs to an early childhood center, it would give them more room for the intra-district magnets and I think more support from ourselves. That's another piece of the puzzle. I will let you all ask questions. Any questions?
If we add those two extra classes, how, what percent of the population in that TK, pre-K, K, would we be able to support? Cause obviously right now, we're, we're not supporting all of the kids certainly.
So I think because it would be a full-day program, it would be very advantageous to our families. And even with having Treehouse, we could possibly do some before and after care right there because Treehouse is there. So I think for our families, it would be the kind of thing that we could even get them there and home. So I think that it would really be a program that would grow and flourish, even if we started small with the three programs. Right now, the half-day programs at pre-K, there's a little bit of responsibility for families getting them back and forth. And it doesn't really, it takes like all year for it to fill up. So I feel like we're gonna get more for our children when, you know, Ms. Bordelone talks about focus on teaching and learning. I couldn't agree more. And we know that early childhood is where we need to start. If we want to accomplish all that we want to accomplish for kids. If we could really have a robust early childhood program in this district, it would help our kids, it would just lift them up from the beginning. And it's always been kind of a dream of mine, but it's a dream of a lot of people's. You know, I would say we've talked about it even as a board when we started with this TK program and trying to, you know, get it off to a good start.
Oh, I totally agree. But right now, I'm just trying to understand like what percentage of the population TK to K are we able to support? Cause like you said, some of them goes to ECDC, Riverfront.
Right.
I just want to make sure that like, yes, that, and maybe can we support like 100% of all the kids that need it? You know, like.
We do have some students who go to the Friendship School that Learn provides. It's a wonderful early childhood center. And I think they're even taking on little babies for next year. So our, our families do have other places that they can go. And I think this, this would fill a need so that, you know, I would love for every Groton parent, if they had a child and they wanted to have a program such as this, to be able to have it one, in one place or another between, you know, the resources that we have.
So the children that attend Riverfront Children's Center and the Early Childhood Development, Development Center, those children are funded through what's called a school readiness grant. And Learn manages the grant. We're kind of like just the pass-through for the grant funds. So they're, they're not necessarily programs that we administer and that we coordinate. We're just supporting those children's seats in that program.
But we're very involved with Children First Groton, who also is a liaison with those programs so that the community partnerships are still very important. We're not trying to take those children from them. You know, they still have a place in our community. But I think this would just give us added seats in our, in our district.
So are we at 30% supporting like every family who needs or wants, or are we at 50%? That's what I'm trying to understand.
I don't think we really have a picture of the number of families that have three to five-year-olds. You know, we certainly work with the families who come to our screenings, but we don't know if those are the only students that there are in the district that are between three and five years old.
I can, I can say this though, with Transition K, we were able to provide every child who would have gone to kindergarten, but was no longer eligible, a seat. So whether they went to the Transition K or they went to another pre, year of preschool or whatever. I mean, I never heard from a family that did not get a seat.
No, that was our goal really, to have these programs this year to bridge the gap with the new legislation for the, the, the age, the eligibility age for kindergarten. So what we're trying to do now is, is envision what this would look like next year.
I like the idea by the way. I just, the reason I'm asking is like, I just want to understand like how many parents who have kids who applied but weren't able to get in. That's the number I'm trying to get at.
Well, generally speaking, the only children who apply that don't get in are children who are referred to the Early Childhood Assessment Team that Karen reviewed with you. And that, the reason, they do get in eventually, but they get in because they get, first they get an individualized evaluation. So sometimes we have children that come to our screenings who have never been in preschool, who are non-verbal. And they obviously, you know, need an individual evaluation and they, they, sometimes with the Early Otters Program, they need that really specialized support. So they do get into the program, but we need to determine what's the most appropriate program.
Do you have a waiting list?
We do not. We used to, but we don't now. No, we do not.
We really try to take them all.
Yeah. We have some children who are, sometimes they're too young to screen. And we just say to the parent, you know, why don't you come back to our next screening? You know, sometimes they'll cry, they don't want to leave their parent, or we're unable to screen them. But for the most part, everyone gets screened and, you know, just about everyone gets a seat.
Thank you.
Did you have any?
I did, I did. Just two questions. I wanted to get it, I think I wanted to get at the same thing Jen. So let me take another approach. Is the population pretty steady from year to year in kindergarten and first grade? We say that we're each year between, I'm making up numbers, between 200 and 230. Do, do we have a baseline number for a given class age that, a fork? That's reasonable.
Well, that, that's a good question. And this year was a different year because not all of our children came to kindergarten.
Yeah, but I'm looking for, I'm looking, I'm trying to, to, to see where we're going with this. We have 192 slots. Let's stipulate that there, that the average class size for kindergartens over the number of years is X. I don't. Would 192 represent all of X? Or is it represent, what, what is X? Can you give me a rough idea of what a fork would be?
I didn't think, and I don't remember if it was Denise or Susan. Oh, Lauren said roughly 350 to 375 for kindergarten. So, but I do, so there is a, there is a population that goes to other, like the mag, the Friendship School, for example, because it's a full-day program. I do think if we opened a full-day program for more slots, that I would imagine a lot of them would come back to district. So I would think we would increase that percentage.
So let's stipu, let's stipulate that 350 is a good working number to play with, okay? And we've got 192. We'd probably pull some, but not all in the Friendship School. We might pull some from some other providers. That would still leave us perhaps 50 to 100 more students than we have now. Do we have the capacity to deal with that next year? Putting money aside, putting money aside. Do we, do we have the capacity?
We, we are starting small. After talking to Ms. Jenkins, I was really thrilled because she's gonna get back to me on what it would look like if there, if this Smart Start Grant came through and you could get two more seats. Because that would give you, you know, another probably 36 kids that you could take care of. So for a full day instead of half-day programs. But Learn does a spectacular job, I have to say, when our children go to Learn for the, their early childhood program. I always am confident when they come back that they're ready to learn as well. So I think that through the community, we're not gonna take all of the children from the community programs. Some of them are really near their homes and they, they love those Riverfront programs. And so, you know, I'm not competing with our community. I'm just trying to enhance our community. Cause I know that there's lots of other programs that are wonderful as well.
So what I hear, what I'm hearing between the lines is that this year we have 192 slots. In a perfect world, well, we're in Groton, we're pretty close. In a perfect world, we would like to increase that by 30 next year and the following year another 30. So it's some metrics so we can, we can see how we're progressing.
So 192, if I can interrupt, that's the Integrated Preschool. So that's three to five-year-olds.
Okay.
So that doesn't include your pre-Ks?
Right. I think you're just talking about the four-year-olds that would go to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just. I didn't understand that. Okay, fine.
Yeah.
Thank you. Second question. You referred to peer models. Could you tell a poor pilgrim what that means?
Of course. Sure. So when they come to the screenings, we do an evaluation or a screener that really looks at, you know, their communication levels, their play skills, their social skills, you know, their ability to follow directions. If they meet a certain criteria on that, then they, and I mean, I could get it for you after this. But the criteria basis, you know, of a more typical student that would be entering into preschool or kindergarten and what we think would be like a nice model for a student that may need, you know, help with those skills. Does that answer the question?
You're closer.
Okay.
I may need some tutoring.
No.
High dose tutoring.
Let me try to clarify that further. So the Integrated Preschool programs are really created to support the students who have IEPs coming out of birth to three, to be in preschool. And what we want for those classrooms is to be more like a traditional classroom where they're not just with other students with IEPs, where they have other students who do not have disabilities, do not have an IEP with them. So those peer models are those regular education students, students without an IEP who are also bouncing out of classroom. So that makes.
Yep, thank you.
No problem.
Do we note the chat there? 32375?
Kindergarteners.
Okay.
Thank you, Lauren.
Mike?
Thank you. Got two questions. One's help with the, the numbers, student numbers and the other one's more about Mary Morrison. But the, the student numbers, so I've got this slide with the, the, very helpful with the four bubbles. It's, it's the state as is. And for the, there's two bubbles on the right, the, the pre-kindergarten. You see, that's four half-day programs, six to 18, 16 to 18 per session. And then on a. And then on another page, that's sixty-four slots. So, so I get that. The transitional kindergarten or full-day sesh, classrooms, sixteen to eighteen students per class. Uh, there was, for, I didn't see anything for transitional kindergarten, the number of slots, um, currently. But if I put that together, isn't that another sixty-four?
Yeah.
Okay, and so is that currently?
Eighteen students and we have four.
Yeah. And, and is that what we currently have in that, right?
I don't think we fill up those, um, TK slots at the beginning.
The pre-kindergarten, the TK are pretty.
Yep, I'm talking about the pre-K. Yeah, pre-K is not, so it takes a while. Like, I think there's about seven or eight in each session right now, and we try to continue to grow that program. So it's not, I wouldn't say it's necessarily sixty-four at this point.
So.
In the pre-K.
So it says, it's more like fifty?
Yeah.
Something like that. So, okay, and then with the, the new, the proposed for next year, uh, with the three bubbles, I can, I can see, you know, the change of course is to the right with the, the merger of the pre-K, TK, and I can see reasons for that. Uh, but then I've got three classrooms times sixteen, and I come up with way less slots. I don't understand that at all. Like, where, what happens to the rest of the students?
So, I mean, I think that is one of the reasons why we're looking for grants for, um, the extra classrooms. But there is also a smaller number of students this year, because this year was the first year of the legislation. We had a larger number of students that we call our, like the bur babies, the, uh, like September, October, November, December students. That's why the reason, you know, for the expansion of TK this year. We do have a small bubble of those students kind of left that would qualify for TK. But the law has kind of created a smaller, and then next year it'll be even smaller. However, we don't really know ever what the, and I, I get, you know, it looks like it is a smaller number of slots. Um, but we, we don't know, like, the typical four-year-olds. So then it would just be the, not all the four-year-olds, we would be going off of the law, which would be January first to September first moving forward. This year we did not.
But so now, so for next year, what's proposed, three times sixteen is forty-eight.
Right.
That's less.
Yeah, we, we would do eighteen.
I, I'm just going, kind of the numbers have always been by the lower end, so, um, okay, uh, you know, fifty-ish. That's less than the slots that we currently have for pre-K. And then we also have another sixty-four slots that I know there's a bubble, but it's currently full. It seems like we're, um, merging classes, but heavily, like, maybe cutting in half, at least, uh, the number of slots for students. And, um, is that because, I, I see what you're saying about the bubble. Uh, but is that entirely because you're projecting that you're going to have a need, uh, that much less need? Because I heard if you offer full day, that will get more people back. Or is it just a lack of funding? That, that's what I'm wondering about, because the numbers literally don't add up.
And was to start small.
But we're starting smaller. We, we, we've started, and now we're making it smaller. So it's not, we, we've, we've already started, and so that it's cutting it.
Right.
So it's not starting at small.
Well, well, when you think about the fact that those pre-K programs this year are not really being utilized to their full capacity.
Fifty students?
Right.
I think there's less.
It's more than that.
No, I think it's thirty.
Yeah.
Well, let's get the right numbers then. Let's not think what they are, let's get what they are.
Yeah, we can do that. Um, and then we are hoping, um, if grants pan out, to add two additional classrooms. So our goal would be to have five full-day TK classrooms at Mary Morrison, if funding allowed.
And I was sticking, the only reason I said three, Mike, was because those are the positions in our operating budget. We already have two pre-K positions and one TK. But when we went to do this, I had told the board that we're going to transition over some of the kindergarten teachers to do the TK. But at the end of the year, I wasn't promising that we would put it in operation funds. That's why I wouldn't have said, you know, it would be wonderful to take the four that we have and add the two more pre-Ks. That would give us six, but I wasn't going to put that on our budget and on the board at this point. If I can get the two extra, though, through a Smart Start Grant and do something like that, you know, that would give us even more slots. So that was kind of the ultimate goal, but I didn't want to saddle.
Who's funding Smart Start?
Department of Ed.
And how long is the grant for?
Do you want to come up? Because you know a little bit about the grant. You can tell us, because she did this in East Hartford and it was very successful. You got the good chair.
So Smart Start hasn't been, um, is, we're waiting on legislation for Smart Start right now. So we won't know until I think they're in session. But, um, Smart Start was originally issued, I want to say back in, I applied for that when, um, maybe two thousand fourteen or fifteen, and, um, East Hartford, uh, was awarded that grant. Uh, we received funds for that grant for a number of years. In fact, I believe the district still receives some funding for that grant to fund, uh, teachers for at least one or two classrooms. Um, over the years, I believe the, um, amount was reduced. And that is just because it's been probably about ten years since, since that grant has been handed to the district. And when we reached out to the State Department of Education just recently, um, you know, we were, uh, let, they let us know that, you know, they're kind of waiting on the legislation for that.
That's something we can talk to our legislators about, too.
That is something that they would like to, um, to fund.
So East Hartford, you had the grant for ten years?
Yeah.
They really created the whole childhood center and welcome center.
Yeah, so, um, at the time, East Hartford wanted to transition, they had a number similar to the model that is in place here in Groton. They had, um, uh, pre-Ks in, um, a variety of elementary schools. And they wanted to bring them together into one center, um, in which would be essentially what we referred to at the time as a one-stop shop. So it would be all of our preschool classrooms. Um, we had a, um, school-based health center at the time, and we brought in a health, school-based health center. Um, we, um, established a welcome center for families there. Um, and we also wanted to, at the time, um, relocate our, um, central registration there. Unfortunately, we were not able to do that, just because we ran out of space. The demand for preschool was so high by our community, um, that we continued to, um, open up more preschool slots, if you will.
Can I ask my, my Mary Morrison question? So, so I do, uh, this, this is more for superintendent, so I do understand the, um, advantages of centralizing, uh, potential ones. But, um, also, Mary Morrison, I remember as a old and cold school. And maybe it can be warm sometimes, but it's not going to be young. And if you do that, if you bring more students in, I recognize there are already some students, but, uh, don't we then need a principal, a vice principal, a school nurse, a nurse's assistant? Different busing routes that are probably going to be longer for these little, little kids. Um, and that would also add, uh, transportation costs. Uh, I'd like, you know, that, that, and, and then we have less slots, which I'm now realizing. I'd like, I'd like to know about, at some point, those, those full costs, and that's in the context of, of budget. But, but this, this could be, I know it's, this is a superintendent report, but I think this could really be an agenda item for a future meeting, too.
Absolutely.
This is quite a big change.
Yep.
Um, thank you. But, but I would like to know, i- if we do this, do we need a principal, vice principal, nurse, busing routes? And it's a, it's still cold.
You can answer the cold question, but it looked in very good condition when we walked through. And it was, would be very easy to set up. And you do need an administrator. Um, but with Karen's experience with early childhood and, um, in New London, what they do is a teacher leader person with an administrator, so they cover their bases. I love the idea of school-based health, but we also have a floating nurse. So there are things that we have in place that could help us put this together in a small way. It might have to grow, it might need a grant to help us grow. But it's, it's an idea I wanted to really let you all hear about.
And, and busing?
It's a kind of centralized location for us.
But it'd be, it'd be a separate route, like they, I would guess right now they're probably going, I guess, at least.
They're going to Thames or Mystic River.
Are they on separate buses right now? Um, or they go with the, the other elementary kids?
Um, it depends on their age and size, so, um, some day runs there by themselves.
But, but, but the morning and afternoon, are they, the, the pre-K and Transitional K, are they on the? Yeah, so I think we're going to have quite a big expense there, too. So, is, is there a real space? Like, I, I know the middle school has a space issue. I, we had all the principals there, I didn't hear spacious, unless I missed it, for the elementary school, so. And then we're having only three classrooms, which is less than we have now. So is there a space pressure here? They missing?
Just, I had mentioned Thames River and Mystic River has the significant programming and the preschools. And so, you know, it leaves less room for the older kids, especially in a lottery situation. Um, so we felt like this would be actually supportive of those two buildings, which really have the largest amount. I would say all of our schools are pretty full, though. There's not extra classrooms. Like, if I go around, like, at first we said, what if we put a TK in every school, and we did that. But now that these TK teachers need to go back and teach kindergarten, because that will fill them at three hundred and fifty or more. Um, we don't have that extra classroom in every school, so that was an idea, too, but there's just no room at the end.
But there, but right now, Transitional K is at four different schools, uh, pre-K is at Mystic, so.
Mystic and Thames.
And Thames, okay, so, I mean, presumably that's, um, at least six rooms, right?
Well, no, the, the TK teachers need to go back and teach kindergarten, so that, those classrooms will go back to kindergarten. So there's not an additional room in each of the schools.
So we'll need several more faculty positions?
Not with the model we've shown you. If we added the two extra positions through a grant, we would get grant funding. But not, everything here is just, um, would keep us even with what we have.
Should we wait for the grant funding to come first? And instead of like Michael saying that now we're going to have less slots, so less kids. But you're hoping we get a grant on, funding, so we can have more kids. Should we wait instead of having less kids?
I mean, that could be an option, but we're going to miss an opportunity, I think. I would like to get you the actual numbers of how many kids are in that.
That would reduce the opportunity.
Well, that we wouldn't be able to have kids who are in a full-day transition kindergarten program.
How soon would you find out about the grant?
We, that by is, yeah, the head, the commissioner of early childhood is on leave right now. So we've, I've gotten this in with Melissa Jenkins, so she was going to try to find more information, and I'll give it to you.
So we're really in the early stages of this proposal. Um, we wanted to share with you about the play-based learning and how well the expansion of Transitional K has been this year. Um, so we just really wanted to put this on radar. We'll go back and do the heavy lift in terms of crunching the numbers and working with the grant, and come back and give you an update.
Ian has a question.
Uh, thank you. Um, first, I just want to thank you all for your efforts. Sounds like a great program, uh, in, you know, the way that it's, it's structured. Um, but I do share, uh, a number of my, uh, of concerns, as my colleague, Mike, has identified. But just a little clarification with the chair, I guess, and the superintendent. Is there an action item attached to this coming before us tonight?
No, there's just an introduction, that's all.
Okay.
Yeah.
Will there be an action item, uh, or will this be an item to be considered as part of the budget coming up?
Yeah, I mean, I would want the board's vote on this. If this is something, even if we wanted to start small, I would want the board to support this if we did that. And I'm not going to be proposing this to the public anytime soon. I want to make sure we have everything lined up. What would it look like next year and in the future, especially if we got the grant?
Okay, um, yeah, so that would be for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Um, so, yeah, I would, uh, just for the sake of efficiency and respect for everyone's time, I, I, maybe, I think it might be wise for us to maybe just kind of wrap it up, uh, for tonight, and, you know, look at, uh, scheduling. You know, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm just speaking as, I'm speaking as an individual board member. Speaking as an individual board member. Speaking as individual board member, that's just my preference, all right, and, and.
Everybody hasn't had a chance to ask a question, so we'll move on from what you're saying.
Right. I think in moving, you know, but I, I would just want to say that when we do reschedule, I think it'd be important to have, like, all the firm numbers.
Yeah.
Um, and, and the grant info, and have it, you know, if it's going to be part of the budget discussion, then let's, you know, make sure we have time for that. Uh, or, you know, scheduled early with all the information in the packet. Thank you.
Adrian has a question. If, if it's all right with Ian that you speak.
Yeah, um, uh, you know, I think TK has been a fantastic, um, program, and I appreciate that. I do kind of go back to the, um, grant funding of that type of thing to continue. And, you know, as we've seen before, grant funding is temporary, um, where board priorities can make things permanent if they're successful. And one thing that I would personally like to see is earlier, earlier identification of students with, um, learning difficulties. Um, because I believe, um, at least from some of the reading, um, discussions there have been, um, intervention is going to be, um, less invasive and less costly from the district if some of those interventions are given properly at maybe, you know, five years old rather than eight years old. Um, those, those will cost the district a lot less money. The outcomes for students are, um, are tremendously increased, um, throughout their education. So, um, so I, I am, you know, curious to see how this goes in the future. Um, and I would be interested in, in, in a real program that, that the, um, that the board gets behind.
I can tell you one factor has been the Hagerty, um, phonemic awareness program that has been throughout all of our preschools and pre-Ks and TKs and all the way through. And that has made the teachers love it. They've seen such significant difference. But to get kids to have that phonemic awareness, even before they have phonics, you know, is critical to this work. So that's one of the biggest, I think, real things that we've seen, and the play-based is really critical.
So do we identify students, um, earlier when we have these programs?
That's what I was going to, to comment, that, you know, these are, um, really comprehensive, high-quality, early intervention programs. And our goal is, you know, to provide that intervention early on and give kids the skills that they need to be successful in future years. And, you know, hopefully exit them from having an IEP, so that.
Yeah, but do we enter them on having an IEP? Are, are we more successful in, in, um, in picking kids out that need an IEP?
Yeah, that's the purpose of the screenings. So when we hold our screenings, which we hold several times a year and in the summer, we're looking for students who may, um, need to work with ECAT for an individual evaluation. We're looking for students who may be peer role models, who have some strengths in their skills. And then we're looking for kids who have that kindergarten readiness and would need a pre-K program. So we're screening for some different, um, you know, different buckets when we screen.
And birth to three is an automatic, so any child that's received birth to three, automatically by the third birthday, they have to be in the seat. So that's really a wonderful program that I think our families need to know about.
Right.
So outside of the screeners, though, are teachers making referrals?
Uh, well, we're talking students who are three to five. So, um, many of our referrals come from parents, um, daycares, nursery schools for students who are not currently in our programs. We do get referrals from the, you know, students in the pre-K program, not as many, because they've already been screened, but we do get some. And we do get some from the TK program as well.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm, I'm talking about referrals for, um, for additional services.
Yeah, me too.
All right.
But the Hagerty, that kind of phonemic awareness program is for all kids.
Right.
And there's assessments that go with it, and that really helps us to identify if there could be some issues coming along, um, while they're with us. Yeah. Matthew?
Yeah, I have a, a question for you. Is it possible to determine dyslexia with a pre-literate population?
Well, there are some red flags that we look for in the Hagerty curriculum, um, such as kids who have difficulty learning to rhyme, um, children who have, you know, weak, poor, um, short-term memory skills with letter identification, um, sound symbol associations. Um, there are some red flags that we can identify through our tier-one curriculum. Um, so I wouldn't say we would identify a child that young as having dyslexia, but we certainly can monitor them and provide more intensive interventions, um, at an earlier age.
Thank you.
Jenny has a question.
It's not a question, it's for us. Like, as a board, we've talked about having an off-site. And I would like to just bring that up again. And I would like to just bring that up again to both of you to see if we can make it happen that. We need to look at, um. From kindergarten to twelfth grade, what we want our district to look like. This is a great model that, um, we currently have. What they're proposing is just as good. But we need to decide and be able to provide guidance to say, okay, we like this centralized. Um, approach because we've seen it be successful in another school district. Um, and then say, okay, so now we've identified kindergarten and then let's say, okay, from first grade to fifth grade, what do we want? And then rather than we we get all good ideas from everyone coming in here. But for me, it's very disjunct, uh, you know, it's not, um, like flowing. I want us to be able to give them good guidance so that they're not putting two proposals together for us. If we tell them this is what we want, um, and then they can put something. Even if it's like, hey, we're having a hard time with half-day kindergarten, let's move to full-day kindergarten. So, um, those are some of the things that we need to help, um, and that's just like. Oh, no, no, or not kindergarten, the the pre K, sorry, the pre K.
That's probably how it happened with kindergarten too. We said we needed a full day.
Yeah, yeah, so if, um, if it's not working, then, um. I don't want us to have teacher resources working with seven kids. But if we converted that to a full day and we get like eighteen kids, like how much better would that be?
That's exactly what I was trying to say, yeah.
Exactly. Annie has a gun.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. I hope it stopped raining for your drive song.
Well, you're probably gonna end up. I'm much stronger leaving early childhood.
Yes, we like that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
He's still here.
Okay, next is, um, director of finance report, and that's attachment two.
And I think was Clint gonna put those up for you? Did he have those or did he have?
Thank you, thank you.
The year-to-date funded budget is total of sixty-eight million. Then from both actual expenditure and then the year-to-date encumbrances. Year-to-date expenditure, actual spending of twenty-six point four million dollars and we've incurred forty-one point six million dollars. You'll you'll see this year over last year that we're encumbering a lot more funds. Anytime we enter into an agreement or a contract with a vendor, we make sure that we're putting encumbrances in. We're also making sure that with the respective areas within the school. That if they know they're going to be using a service three or four times or even once a month. We're encumbering the funds now so that we can get a better look at what our end of fiscal year is going to look like. So not much has changed as far as, uh, over last year. I'm sorry, as as far as our last meeting, we're still seeing those areas we discussed before, property. Services and purchase services are still, we're projecting those to be in the negative. Um, and then the areas to watch or areas of concern, again, it's electricity. We did see that delivery cost increase due to the pandemic recruitment. We are starting to see some of the solar credits. Come in, so I have as part of your handout tonight, answers to some of your questions regarding that. So for just October alone, we received a credit of about eleven thousand dollars in solar. Those fundings, um, we don't get an automatic credit on our ever-source bills. We get information from direct energy and then we have to request that be applied to our ever-source bills. So you're going to see about a month lag on those. And then your, um, utilities dashboard, I plan to update that and include. Information that shows just the credits, so it'll be called out separately, so those are getting reworked right now. That's why you haven't seen them for a couple meetings now. Then also the repair and maintenance, um, for equipment. Um, again, that Sam could probably speak to, it's not necessarily that Sam and his team are lagging and doing what they can. This specifically goes to the deferred maintenance because we haven't been able to get some things through. The capital improvement program to fund. And without that, then we're gonna have deferred maintenance, not only on vehicles, but we're also going to see that in our buildings. They're doing the best they can. They're doing an amazing job with what they have. But that is something to look at because we will continue to see expenditures increase in those areas. In proportion to budget because we haven't been able to get those funds. The more we push things out, um, the more that those costs are going to increase. Transportation, the rising costs, um, as we spoke about before, we are seeing some. Um, situations with special education, uh, district transportation. So we did identify with Denise that there were, uh, two months of billing. That we were not supposed to receive regarding some transportation, so we'll be receiving some credits from Curtain for that. So we can see this come down a little bit, but not by that much. In school lunch, uh, meal balance, the outstanding debt, sorry, as of eleven twenty-nine is trending towards about ten thousand dollars. And, um, against Sam, Ernie and Ernie's team. They're reaching out on a weekly basis for the ones that are not paying their bills to see what we can do to help them. You know, is it simply a form that needs to be completed? And we're also addressing it through our communications team now at the central office, so we're trying to get that information out to people. That are in need so that we can reduce that balance. Please keep in mind, any, um, deficit in school lunch at the end of the fiscal year is the responsibility of the district to pick up. That's why we have this as an area to watch, is if we see it continue to trend up, I'll make sure that I update this with Sam. Um, and Ernie on a monthly basis so that you can get a better gauge of how much we would have to cover within the district budget. For unemployment compensation, um, you can see last year or in prior years. We didn't see that much unemployment compensation going out and we budgeted thirty-five thousand compared to what we were actually expending in prior years. But with the reduction of the positions in the FY twenty-six budget, you're seeing that our expenses related to unemployment. For our portion are almost double. And that'll go through probably until about, um, January, February. Because I believe they have six months of unemployment insurance benefits before they either need to find a position or find another way. Um, to fund their lives while they're looking for employment.
Will this number increase?
Yes. Yes, because it, you know, if the reductions occurred in, as of June thirty and we would notify people in July. They can apply for unemployment insurance up to six months, so you're still gonna see this number increase. Um, for the months of December and most likely January.
We do know that many of the Paris and tutors did get jobs even in our district or got jobs in other districts, so. We might not, you know, many of them may have gotten jobs, so we have to wait and see, but just keep an eye on it.
Uh, the computer network services, um, I can actually speak that this has actually gone up even more. These are services that we have to do for the district. So the budget was ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand and year-to-date actual expenditures and encumbrances. As of eleven twenty-nine, we're a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. As of yesterday. We're peaking at about two hundred and ninety-nine thousand. And these are services that we have to provide to keep our systems up and running. And all the communications that we're doing. Um, if this is something you'd like additional information on, I can. Work with Susan and see if we can bring Clint perhaps to the next finance and facilities meeting. So he can let you know what happened. About three hundred thousand dollars that was previously covered in grants. Sunset, we no longer have those grant funds, but we still have to provide those services. Um, the cost associated with the town operational review, that's something that we're still, um, looking at and we're going to keep track of. So that we can provide a monthly update to you about, uh, conditional expenses we're incurring. Uh, I believe Susan had a conversation and I don't want to speak to that. But we're making sure that we carve out what those expenditures are so that you can actually see what those are, so that they're not buried within. A budget line items or year-to-date actual expenditures. Uh, other business still occurring within the finance office is we're still working on the FY twenty-four audit. We're getting questions still daily on that. Um, FY twenty-six budget worksheets, we have those back from the school. We're still in the process of compiling all the information. And we hope to have an update for you next week, I believe, on the sixteenth. Um, and as well as policy updates that we're working on, um, a few that you'll hear tonight. And then the actual numbers, if anybody has questions on these. Um, there were some outstanding questions from the October twenty-eighth meeting and then just last week's finance and facilities meeting. So that's in your handout. Uh, one of the big ones was in regards to account one oh five for administration, line five. What was creating that deficit is an issue with an encumbrance and, um, with that particular line item. That as of just this past pay cycle is eleven twenty-nine. Um, ninety-eight thousand dollars of that pertains to raise interim salary. So he came and he was originally, um, hired on for two days a week, but he was needed five days a week, so that's what driving was driving that number. And then he's still assisting with.
Ninety-eight thousand for ready salary?
Yes.
When did they start?
I think April, I think something like April.
Right, but this is just from July first till now.
Oh, okay.
This is not going back to those prior months, that's just for now. Um, he has agreed to stay on to assist with the town operational review so that we could stay focused on the. Audit work as well as the budget work. So he's working, um, two to three days a work, a week just on the town operational review items. And like I said, we're keeping track of those expenses separately.
But only charging us when he has the work to do.
Right, exactly. He doesn't charge us if he doesn't have any work.
Yeah, so if they've given him a list of things, he's gotta go and, you know, provide, then he, it does require his time.
So that's, sorry.
I am, I am confused. This is from July first till now?
Yes.
That's five months, twenty thousand dollars a month?
It was higher in the months before I was hired. Um, and then we tailored it down to one day a week and only then it was a half day. So this is predominantly from July. Probably through mid-October, if that.
I think we need to check with Lori too, and she'll get us back.
That is actually, Ray was in the office today and confirmed that that is his salary.
Twenty thousand dollars a month.
Yeah, um, so there was, um, open positions, correct, for about two months each for the assistant superintendent and the finance director?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, that's, I was just doing rough math and it seems like it maybe is around sixty thousand dollars. Um, is that reflected in here?
Yes.
Savings from those open positions?
That's already in.
Still behind a hundred and fifty more.
Yes, because there's also another position that we're still reviewing, um, to. Make sure that it's the position that Susan and I think it is, but the person we need to confirm that with is unfortunately out of the office until Wednesday.
What do you mean?
There's another position involved in this line item. That I just need to confirm with the department head, but they're not here to confirm that with right now.
All right, so so we may or may not have budgeted for that third position?
The additional position is not budgeted, that's why you're seeing the excess.
All right, so there is another position that's largely contributing to that.
Right, so that was, um, in the response, it was that there's, you know, a remaining balance that's under review, it is another position. And it's not, it's not within the business office.
When will we find out what that position is?
As soon as we get the person back and we can review it with you.
Well, we know the position and we, you're ready for the person?
No, we're not sure what the position is.
No.
One of the things that has happened.
You have to be sure what the position is.
Because the e-finance software, when I try to run the various extracts to see where things are getting billed against accounts. You have to go back to paper-based information unless they were built into the budget last year. So if it's something brand new that wasn't added before. There's not a clean way to research it out of our existing software.
That's why we need Munis.
Yes, it would have been much easier, I could have had it within ten minutes and I spent about three hours today. Looking through various reports and there's no easy extract to find out that particular position billed to this account number.
So if, I'm sorry, if if we have a cost account, right, and like we're swiping our card or we're like saying. So like if like, like I'm charging department, whatever, two ten. We don't have that?
No, and I actually provided a sample to show you. But this is actually what the general ledger looks like. It just tells me in that account that's a payroll charge.
Oh, that's that piece of paper that I was.
Yep, yep, so it's digging into that payroll charge, is actually physically digging into that, that specific payroll, not cumulative. To see the distribution that was done to that specific account.
Yeah.
It's where and.
So our operational review, let's put something in place to like fix that because not knowing what we're paying.
Exactly, yeah, that's something that, um, you know, that's why I did recommend and put the, the. Capital improvement request forward to, uh, John Burt is for Munis because that is something I could have. Run it a report and had it to you in fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
I think a lot of people around the table are seeing the light more now that, you know.
It's so much easier. If you want a vacancy report.
Right.
I can run that in less than five minutes. If you want to see all positions, FTE, where they're coded, it's an Excel data dump. Maximum fifteen minutes and most of it's for the report to run.
Well, even Irene's work and all of you, many of you said this last budget season. Trying to look at just central office and how many, you know, under my department, under HR, which is shared. There's other things that are kind of miscellaneous, so we're really trying to. Um, Irene's doing a great job trying to really peel out, peel the onion and really get central office where it should be.
Mm-hmm.
With all the positions and all the, you know, expenses under each department. So that it's much easier, I think even with, um, Sam's last year, there were extra things underneath his department that were, really weren't related to Sam at all. So we have to, it's just the way things were always done here.
Let me ask you the same question in a different way. I am understanding, I hope incorrectly. That just for that Ray's salary or the expense that that's incurred for the work that he is doing. Uh, is all targeted towards the. Town operation review.
From last week forward, from December, December second forward, it's going to be billed, that's what he's working on.
And before that period, he was doing what you're doing now?
That was the interim finance director, right, and then, um, about mid-October, we cut back to just half a day on Fridays. Just for any additional.
You're probably talking eighty-five to ninety thousand of it being. The interim position and only small part being for the town.
Now, the, that ninety-eight is pretty much, that was everything through eleven twenty-nine, so that was. When he was serving as interim finance director here. From December second forward, that's the town operational review.
And I think some of the audit was in there too. There were some additional things that he was able to help out with. You know, um, in the transition and, um, so we'll, we'll get more information on that exactly.
Jay, Jay, then Ian and Mike.
So is he being paid by the hour, by the day?
By the hour.
Contract?
By the hour, he's up, he's. By the hour, he's a, he's a hired employee with the Board of Education.
And this is the actual expense from July first to present, this is not encumbered?
Right, there's nothing encumbered right now for Ray.
And this other position? What is?
We have to find out.
We're digging into the detail to find, I spent three hours today. So the challenge with the payroll documents as of today with our current e-finance system. That's getting upgraded, so it could change next month and I would be thankful for it. You cannot export anything out of payroll into an Excel document. Everything is PDF, period. That's just the equipment that we have, the software we have today. We're getting the upgrade done by the end of January and I'm so hopeful that we'll be able to export things out to Excel. Because then I'd be able to find it for you. Right now, it's looking through every staff member's name. It's a page for every single staff member and where they're all coded to try and find it, it's not through a searchable PDF. It's very difficult, so I was able to find Ray because Ray was assisting me finding Ray. But the other position I just need to verify. And no, he didn't charge the board for that either. We did it on Wednesday.
Who knows? Who is it that we need to ask? Who are waiting for this vacation?
The H R department. They can help us probably through their own files.
When these payroll entries go through, there's no employee code attached to it.
There's an employee number. Each person has their own specific employee number. But it's not as like similar in the private sector, you would have a grouping of employee numbers for each area. We don't have that, as soon as you're hired, you get the very next code.
I just, I want to ask, what I actually came to ask about before this came up was your your use of the encumbrances, you know, just looking at the, at your highlight page without going into the riskiest yet. So we've got your data expenses, the, we know these are them. The encumbrance needs represent something that there's either been a purchase order or.
Or a contract.
Oh, thank you, a purchase order or a contract. With regard to purchase services and property services. These are all the the purchase orders that are in through the end of the year. But are we, are we concerned that this? I mean, we're already in the deficit, I mean, are we still? Are there still services we haven't even put out yet?
That I can defer to Sam, I can just look at numbers, so. If there's additional property services such as repair and maintenance and that could definitely occur where we don't have a purchase order.
Well, like last year when we had all of those floods and things that kind of came up, we don't have like a, a fund for emergencies.
Right, we don't have a contingency like the town does, that is something I'm proposing for FY twenty six.
But, for example, we, we have budgeted for all the HVAC testing.
Yes.
Has that been, have purchase orders been cut and and funds encumbered?
Yes.
Okay, so the standard ones, like the fire testing and the HVAC testing, all of those we've encumbered.
Okay.
These are the, the unknowns that we wouldn't have encumbered because if it's a repairer, you didn't know you needed to make that repair. So that is still some areas that you would see a purchase order issued.
Okay.
Fortunately, we have staff, maintenance staff and custodial staff that does the work in almost all the cases, but you know, if we need to rebuild walls because of a flood or something, we have to then reach out to insurance. Not that I'm giving any premonitions on that.
Right. Well, without getting into, you know, detail on every single line, for example, for transportation. You've encumbered six point seven million. Does that mean that all of the established routes that we have are are encumbered through the end of the year?
We encumbered the contract because we made that commitment.
All right, and so this available is for those sports, special ed, that sort of thing that we may be don't know about yet.
Right, it could, it could shift in between line items too.
Okay. All right, I'm just trying to understand because in the past we, we've had business managers that really didn't use the encumbrance tool the way.
Right.
She's doing it very carefully.
So I'm just trying to understand how you're, how you're. Right, I, I think that's enough for me for the moment.
Yes, without using the tool creates surprises towards the fourth quarter that no one wants to see. So we're trying to be proactive.
Diligent?
I can't even get the word.
Diligent is a good word. I would say if you have actually helped the every department head to be even more diligent, so I applaud you for that, Irene.
Thank you. So I just want to revisit the, the mystery position here real quick.
It, it's, I just want to clarify, it's not a mystery, it's just the person I need to ask is out on vacation.
Okay.
So when she's back Wednesday, I can answer the question. It's a mystery in the e-finance software.
Right, so I mean, that definitely highlights the need for, for correcting the software situation. But and I understand that the attraction of Munis. But to my recollection, we still haven't yet discussed or voted on, on what we're going to do with that. As a board. I know that there's been some, a lot of talk, a lot of research. But I would like to make that official. You know, have like a presentation of all the options that are out there. And, you know, at some point in the near future.
That's a good idea.
I'd like to make that a referral item for the future. Based out of this conversation. Although I do believe that Munis does have the inside track. But I think just for due diligence sake. I'm just, it's just astounding to me that, and now I, I have concerns that if there's, if we don't have that track, that accountability throughout our departments, I mean, are there other positions that may be running over, do we have other overages or other costs that?
There, there are some others that we need to be able to dig into the detail for, but again. I'm hoping with the upgrade that we'll be able to start being able to export things out to Excel so I can get a clearer answer. Right now, it's just not feasible.
Definitely welcome that. And I just, to clear up some confusion, in the upper left corner of this paper, it says Pentimation Enterprises. What is, I mean, is that just the software?
Yeah.
Okay, that's. And so if I'm looking at this correctly, the expenditures that we're not sure what the position was or is. What's the total spent on that right now?
For that particular one, we're up to about the, the difference between Gray and the remaining position, so you're about fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, this is the same.
Where is the, the savings on the other two positions then?
It's already built into that line. So the savings is already being over expended too. There's no savings on top of the deficit. They're all in that particular line item.
Yeah, but I'm saying if the savings was supposed to say sixty thousand dollars. That's already, the encumbrance has changed for that saving somewhere else.
Yes, the encumbrance is, the encumbrance is just for the positions that are filled. And then the encumbrance goes into that. There, if it's vacant, then there's not an encumbrance for that.
Sorry, Ian.
That's all right.
Matthew, you have a question?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just, I gotta recollect my thoughts, so I'll pass on for now.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So for the operational review, so Ray, if I understand right, as of last week, December second, that if he's working for the schools, that's what he's working on.
Right.
So for last week, do you have a kind of estimate of how many hours, how many days he worked?
Last week, he worked two days, two full days, so about fourteen hours, the average is between fourteen and sixteen. This week, he's working three days.
Okay, who else last week or, or this week too was working on the operational review, dedicating hours?
No.
Okay.
There's no additional support staff available.
Okay, and then, and then you mentioned before, I guess before December, he was still in his interim duties and, and at I guess maybe through November, he was working half days on Fridays.
Just one half day on Friday.
One half day on Friday. Before, in November, for instance, was he working on the town operational review?
No.
So, so who was working on it then?
No one.
But.
That was the memo that we sent to Jay and Bev that was distributed to you that there's no resources to support this additional work.
We had met with the organization, Joe. And we prioritized, we got him started on looking at policies. And he has a whole laundry list of things and he's kind of, it sounds like he's doing one thing at a time. Asking us for details, so. So we got him started and we met with him and now he's got a list of some other things to do, so.
He being the auditor?
Yeah, well, I don't know if you call.
He's the town consultant for the operation.
Okay, and, and so, so, okay, so before you, you met with him before December. But no, no work in filling his information requests started until last week.
No.
All right, and then so it's quite a long request, do you have a sense of? I mean, some of it was existing information from, that would have been prepared from previous years audits. How far along in their requests are, are we talking? Is it almost filled, half filled?
No.
Scratching the surface?
Scratching the surface.
Okay.
The level of detail underneath every single of those one line item requests could generate, Ray was uploading twenty thousand page reports.
So we would be hopeful that the prior audits would help support the work. But what we understand is that he's looking for us to, to provide that, that the town is not providing that.
Okay, so just speaking for myself. I'd, I'd like to see more of a balance between, I mean, so, so Ray's an employee, but I'd like to see some of our other town staff sort of sharing the load there so that be, because you know, any, any of Ray's time now is by definition unbudgeted. And, but our, our staff are here and I, I know, I know there's a lot of workload. I know that, but that's something we have budgeted in. So that, that's just speaking for myself.
Well, we're still doing the budget currently, the audit currently, and like last year, we've been asked sometimes two, three times for the same information, so we go back and we re you know, give them more, the information that we've already given. And so it's really been extended and then, you know, you know, we think we're done and then they come back with more items, so it's very similar to last year that you know, if there's an extension, it's because of things that they're asking that, you know, either again or in addition to. So we have to take care of the audit and the budget is kind of our first priority at this point. And you know, we, we explain that to this, you know, consultant. That that's our priority and we were getting extra help to help give him and he's been pretty good about giving us one thing at a time, so I don't feel like we're lagging.
But to Mike's point, if we only have Ray, that's going to cost us a lot of money that we don't have in the budget. So you're gonna have to look for somebody in our office.
There's some buttons back.
Well, we have to figure it out.
Right now, right now.
That's going to cost us a lot of money.
Ten to twelve K a month.
Right now, we're laughing, a staff accountant.
Ten to twelve, ten to twelve K a month.
Yeah, ten to twelve K a month.
So as of right now, I'm serving five positions in the business office. I'm the staff accountant, the budget analyst, the procurement person and the director of purchasing, while being director of finance. While trying to do an FY twenty four audit. Making sure everybody's following the laws and the regulations and policies of the board, working on policy and trying to work on a budget. And doing a system upgrade for finance.
It's a lot.
There's nobody else in the office that can do this work, that's why I've been asking for positions since I got here.
And I think some communication with the town. Yeah.
Could we?
And that's something we can throw it to the town council that Ray's costing us ten to, would you say Mike?
At least ten to twelve, if it's twenty, because Matt, yeah, it's twenty K a month, if it's at full.
Well, that wasn't at full. He was always part, he's never been a full time, right?
Well, he did do the five days.
He was full time for several weeks.
Yeah.
I'm still.
He hasn't been full time since I got here, but.
I'm still confused, we had.
Matthew.
I apologize, I apologize.
Jim wanted to say something, I'm sorry, Matthew.
Irene, I totally understand where you're coming from, I feel for you. You probably don't have the right mix of people to support you, so I totally agree with that. Ray, we know as a consultant, consultants come in at a higher rate, so we know that too. So if we're over a hundred and fifty thousand and let's say we were supposed to be favorable sixty, that really means we're over two hundred thousand. So, and let's say Ray's ninety eight or half of that. We have this position that we're not disclosing right now because somebody's like missing on what, you know, they're not coming back on Wednesday. We know what type of position that is. I just want to understand and if you don't have it this time for the next time we meet is, is what is that H R position? Or maybe we're just asking H R and it's not really an H R position. Was it existing and an existing position? Or was it unfunded? And we just need to understand because that's like a hundred grand that we can have a teacher or a couple tutors or whatever it may be.
I'll follow up, I'll let her know and see if she'll provide an email with the information.
Yeah.
So I can provide it to the board.
Yeah, no, like, like I totally feel free, I understand where you're, you know, coming from. So you have our support. Yeah, let's see if we can transition maybe some of the clerical type of stuff and get away from a higher costing individual. So Ray may come in and do the strategic type of stuff in support of you, but we get like a clerical person to do the submissions, do the photocopy, do whatever it may be, so that we transition from X amount of hours to more of like so that we can have our funds go, kind of, you know, stretch it out a little bit.
And are you finished? Do you continue if you want to?
Okay, thank you. There was a question about line number eight, which is account one oh eight. What exactly is the dean coordinator? So that's the athletic director for Fitch and Groton Middle, Middle School. There was a question about lines twenty nine, thirty and thirty one about clerical support, how it's broken out into three different sections. For special education, the account one thirty three is called high school completion, that's clerical support for that. And then one thirty four is a combination of the superintendent's office and support services. There are three positions, the temporary registration, part time human resurface, service, sorry, part time human resources and a B O E clerk, so that's Jones position in our book there.
So that's the kind of thing we need to really clarify that when it's all under one bucket, it's really harder to, and especially with the system to find out who, what it is actually, so we're trying to really split that out, so central office, we have each department with who reports in that department and all the staff within the department instead of spread out in these other buckets.
Right.
It's like a jigsaw puzzle.
So a line fifty five to one that pertains to health insurance. And Adrian, your question is in here about the concern from last year. So the FY twenty five budget is now ten point five, thirteen point, ten point one rounded million. As compared to FY twenty four's budget was only six point eight million. So our average quarterly budget is about two point five, so we're about three thousand over estimated on a quarterly basis, so about maybe twelve thousand dollars by the end of the fiscal year. Not like last year.
Yeah.
So the guess was, the educated guess of was correct.
Good job.
Yes, the plus is the budget was increased. There was a question about the student intern on line seventy six, account three twenty five. That one is providing instructional services from the university, working in the classroom as substitutes as well as student teaching. So that's what that pertains to, that was unbudgeted. And we're estimating a total of twenty seven thousand for the fiscal year, we've expended about nineteen so far. There is an open question for you, Mike, that is the line one nineteen for the telephone costs, what's driving the increase? And Clint is working with Bree's line to determine what that driving cost is and why. But we are still waiting on the answer and I know he's going to follow up with the vendor again. But we are still waiting on the answer and I know he's gonna follow up with the vendor again. And then last but not least, was the electricity. Are we receiving our solar credits? Yes, we are for, but it hasn't hit your accounts yet in line one seventy-four because we have to request the credit that direct energy is provided from Eversource. So as of line one seventy-four, account six thirty-one, there aren't any credits posted to this one million dollars yet, or I'm sorry, the five seventy-eight. No, I'm sorry, I'm messing it up again. So it's one million dollars for the total expense. And we're gonna see credits hopefully within the next month to two months, but we need to ask for them on a monthly basis. So they will get applied directly against the expense because it's not revenue in addition to its credit. So that's why it's being booked there against the expense. And the total credits for October, just for the month of October, were nineteen thousand three hundred and thirty-three.
If, may I ask a question? The amount that we're receiving in credits, does that match or exceed or come in lower than we had projected?
I can find out. I don't know what the original projections are, but I've been looking into that.
Thank you.
Just to circle back on the recruitment for the, the pandemic recruitment fees in the electricity bill, do we have an actual number on that, like the percentage that we're being assessed and like what we're actually paying on top of the regular?
That's what I'm working on for the update to the electric, or the utilities dashboard to start breaking out into all that additional information so you can see what changed.
Great, um, you know, one of the things.
Right, you get to a budget first.
One of the things I'm looking to talk to our delegation about is, is finding relief from the recruitment fees for boards of education, not just here, but across the whole state. So having the actual numbers so we can put a monetary value on it and equate it to what it would cost, what that's costing us in staff and student support, I think would be a great arguing point. And do we have an actual total on what? We're tracking the numbers now on what's being spent to provide the items for operational review. Do we have the actual figure on that? Was that just the twenty-ish? Or, and, and I'm not sure if I heard the number specifically. That's what I'm asking, like, what do we spend so far?
So Ray just started working on operational review December second. So he spent about fifteen hours at about a hundred and sixty dollars per hour last week. And then this week he plans to spend, I believe, about twenty-one hours on operational review.
So he did five, he did fifteen and now he's scheduled to do twenty-one?
And then there was additional equipment that was needed so that he could work on it, was dual laptop or dual screens and a docking station. And that total was about five hundred dollars for that additional, but that was it.
So in your opinion and, and expertise, do you think it, it would be like a temporary clerical staff hire would be in order to help support what has been mentioned here as far as like trying to like take some of the more like grunt work, for lack of a better term, away from Ray and like have Ray be strategic and organizing, but have someone doing the scans, doing the uploads, doing all that stuff?
If I have hired temps in the past, what I found is it takes about two to three weeks to train, just so that they can gather the information and try to find where the information's at. We are running into situations where we're recreating, not recreating, but we're creating new information that as.
That's been requested.
Found that, that was requested, that was not previously requested, so we're creating new documentation. And again, the request was for all new hires since July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two till current, which, again, our current system doesn't allow us just to see new hires and provide that as a report as well as all terminations. So it's not something that we can easily run out of the system.
Okay.
So we'd have to have a confidential temporary employee. Then we train them on the system to try and generate that level of detailed report for the review. So right now it's, yes, we'll need temporary help for Ray soon, but he's not doing any grunt work right now. He's actually just, he knows where the information is that we provided to the CLA or audit firms in the past and he's uploading that information. It's, it's not creating any new information yet. He's not scanning documents or anything like that or making copies.
You do anticipate that coming?
Yes.
All right.
And we were talking about getting clerical support for that. We didn't want him wasting his time on that.
In that case, I would definitely recommend that, you know, we consider that as a board, a request to submit to the town council to fund a position such as that. Excuse me. And. See, and just, just to confirm, like, once, once all the details about the, the position that's not been identified, that will be shared with us as a board?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's why I have it as a follow-up in your, in your questions.
Thanks.
So I'll just keep track of all your questions and then try to provide them on a monthly basis so that, you know, as they come available, it's not just sending an email out, just having a, a clear concise report so that we have it available.
To that end, will this document be included in the minutes for this meeting?
Yes, I've provided them to Joyce.
Okay.
And typically what I've been doing is as you ask for information, I start incorporating it into the notes.
Great.
Future. So that, example was the, what is in the other line items? I presented that and then also I incorporated it in the notes so that you didn't have to go looking through prior documents to try and find that information.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Jay has a question.
The audit was mentioned and, and again, I, I realize you are working with the current budget. You are budgeting for next year, you're doing the audit, and so I realize it's a lot to have on, on your plate all at the same time. But how would you characterize the progress of the audit at, at this point now that we're in December? Do we know how close we are to it?
Sure, it's, I, I believe it's just a few tying up some questions that are lingering.
Okay.
When we had a meeting last week.
Yep.
We basically stated that we were on the right path and we weren't going to file, need to file an extension this year.
Excellent. Now that, that's good to hear.
Unless they come up with other things that they didn't ask for.
This is true, not come with.
Right, well, and, and, and just to, to get back to that for a moment, so, it's been said, you know, that they're asking for the same information over and over, but if I understand correctly, part of what an auditor does is test records. And so maybe that's part of their process to make sure they're getting the same answer twice. So I just don't want to make it sound as though we're questioning their methods. I mean, they obviously have standards they have to go by to make sure that the audit is, is complete. The other question. You know, at, so Ray has done everything that, that, that he can do to be helpful with the auditors. Have they been in physically and done the records testing here in the office?
About the audit or?
The auditors, the auditors.
Yes, the auditors were here.
Annual auditors.
About two or three weeks ago, finishing up their testing.
Okay.
If there were items that they still needed for testing, I've been uploading those to them as well.
Okay.
And we've been having weekly updates with the town as well as, you know, the district is, anybody involved in the audit, we're in the weekly updates.
Okay. We were warned it would be very difficult to get back on schedule with the audit. So it's good to hear that we've made this, this kind of progress that it sounds like, maybe within striking distance. So thank you very much for your work on that and also to Ray for his assistance early on with that.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a quick one. Are you, so do we have open positions in the finance office right now?
There's one open position that we're going to be recruiting for. I'm read, right now, currently in the business office, everybody has the same job title. It's accounting assistant. And then it changes when you roll. I'm working with Lori to update the job descriptions. They were last updated in two thousand eight. So it's making sure that we have a grant accountant, that we have the, you know, payroll specialist, that we have a budget analyst, that we start looking for, you know, at least write the job description, not to hire yet, but a procurement specialist that could be part of the budget analyst's role. But I'm working with Lori on that to make sure that we're getting job descriptions that meet what the expectation is so that when we're recruiting, we're getting a better response to our recruitment efforts.
And more expertise in those designed areas and then the cross-training that she's already started and Ray had started, but she's continued so that more than just one person in, right, who's sitting in that seat in business can do some of that work. So that's something we've known about for several years.
Well, thank you for your, for your work.
Any other, have you finished any more?
On the set, these are the policies, that's all.
Thank you, I mean.
Thank you.
Yeah. Really good work. It's, she's doing a great job. It's hard work.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah.
Nobody asks these questions.
No, it's okay. That's, that's what you're here for. Unfortunately, we can't share you the.
Next one is general.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For full disclosure, I just have to report that I did move over to this chair. I was over there in the corner, which is a place that I spent many hours as a youth. And, and so it was bringing back memories. So I came over here so that I could see the board and, and the presenters. It's the truth. And the presentation, which was nice, also to share the mic with Dr. Ackerman and, and, and to be closer to the candy dish. And not necessarily.
It's probably passing around.
And not necessarily in that order. I, I've got five items that I'll report on tonight that I shared with the finance committee the other night. So the state required HVAC testing that we will be doing at both Northeast Academy and Catherine Colnaski, we will be doing over the winter break. So Fussin O'Neill was the winner of the bid for that project and they needed the assistance of our computerized building, automated building system company in order to, to do the project. So those two companies, Fussin O'Neill and ABS or Automated Building Systems will be here to work on those projects at Colnaski and Northeast Academy during the winter break.
Sam, can you give us some numbers for that?
Meaning?
How much this is costing us?
It was in forty-five, it was forty-five or forty-seven thousand dollars to do both schools.
And what did we put in our budget to work?
We put one eighty in because at the time, the state was saying that we had to do the entire district. But since then, the state has allowed us to do twenty percent or one-fifth of the, of the building. So this year we're gonna do those two buildings, which have had the probably the more frequent concerns about humidity in the building. So we're gonna do those two first. And of course, you know that we also put into the CIP for replacement of the units on those two buildings as well because those two buildings were built with HVAC units that do not dry out the air. It just recycles the air. So that was part of the problem with the humidity and since then, we've been doing active dehumidification, which is essentially running the boilers to dry out the air that's coming back in as, as it's recycling, which is not, not inexpensive, to say the least.
Do you have a cause for that too?
I do not. I mean, we can get one, but.
Can you get one for us?
Yeah.
How soon, can you get it sooner than later?
It'll probably be later than sooner. It's, but we'll work on that. I'll do it as quickly as I can. It's, it's, it, it, it's, it's a number that doesn't, it, it kind of floats around, so it isn't really a hard number to figure out. So it, it's based on temperature, sunny days versus cool, cloudy days, all kinds of different things that may have occurred over the years.
Maybe in the summertime too, and the, when the humidity's even.
But I, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think Bev is looking for the cost. Do we have up-to-date numbers on the cost of the, the CIP or the numbers we've given to the town?
Oh, is that the question?
Yeah.
Yeah, those were in the, those were in the millions of dollars, so.
But, but they are current, because I mean, we put the CIP in for many years and I don't know how often we review them.
Yes, I had to pay a, a professional, give us a professional cost estimate on those and, and they were four plus million dollars at one school and just about four million in the other.
That's current.
Yes, NEA is a little, it has, I mean, four and eight classrooms, less than, they could do four to eight more classrooms there. So it's a little bit smaller than Colnaski.
Four million, that's.
Is it, yeah.
Yeah, that's not gonna.
Oh, eight million. Well, it was close to eight million with the two schools, yes.
Because when we meet with the state delegation, we, we wanna tell them, talk to them about this.
Yeah, absolutely. The, the other item, one of the other items that we're working on presently is that the state has now started the audit on the Groton Middle School building project. So we are gathering information here in our own confines as well as working with both Public Works, which did the project, and Arcadis, which was the administrator of the project. So all three of us are putting numbers together and getting that to the state for their audit. Once they get all of that information, they will be coming down for an onsite review of the paperwork that is at the, or at the annex building with Public Works.
That's a shared service. They're sharing that responsibility, the town and the district.
They're just now auditing GMS?
Yes.
No comment.
I don't know what the timeframe is.
Well, it's fresh in everyone's mind.
Maybe they'll find some money for guys to add a few more classrooms.
Well, everybody's back to the office yet, so maybe that had something to do with it.
Go ahead, Sam.
The third item is EV charging stations at the Groton Middle School, Thane River and Mystic River Schools. We looked at it, we talked about it at the finance committee last week. And looking at the potential cost, the estimates for upgrading those so that we can charge people who are actually charge those who are charging their vehicles there. It, it would be, the estimate is about six thousand dollars per building, so that's gonna have to go out to bid. So we're gonna have to put that together as a bid package and go out so that we can move forward with that.
Now, is the town doing the same thing? I think we worked with the same group.
Well, the town has already started with a company. I don't, I don't know how they did it. I've got a call into Bob Charette, who's the head of Public Works here, at least, not, not the very head, but the person that I would talk to at Public Works about their bid package. If indeed they did go out to bid on it. It's a company that they use, have used previously. So I don't know what the, what idea was, but I got a call and I'm just waiting to sit down with him and go over whatever that bid package was that we may be able to use to help us put it together. The, the EDO forty-nine, which is the form that goes to the state OSCGR, which is the Office of School Construction Grants Review. That form is ready to go to the state, so it's in the process of going to OSCGR.
It's at this building.
Signed, sealed, but not delivered.
That is for the barn roof.
Okay.
Yes. The last item that I had to report on is the, we, we're, we're looking at the possibility of getting some small electric buses or maybe something like sixteen-passenger vans for events or to move people around the district. And so Shannon Wigle is conferring with Griswold. I asked her today. She doesn't have an update on that since our last finance facilities committee meeting, but Griswold has already started a project and so we want to talk to them, see how it went and what they had to do to get it. So we're waiting on Shannon to, to get some information from them. Uh, we're waiting on Shannon to uh, to get some information from them.
Oh, Adrian, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna uh, ask about the chargers. Um, do we have any answer on if we can shut them off at night? Or maybe put up some signage to say that, you know, teacher parking or anything like that? Staff parking, I should say.
Yeah, I could probably shut the, I could probably turn the circuit breakers off each night if that's what we decide, if that's what. Your pleasure was, I think we could do that.
With the labor, maybe. The additional labor just doing that twice a day outweigh the cost of leaving them on overnight.
Yeah, I guess it probably, yeah. I'm sure it would.
Is it a big task to do?
To turn the circuit breakers off? No, I just have to, we we would have to train somebody.
Oh, you're right. We probably would need a sign too, because people could get frustrated if they felt like. Or they could show up early in the morning and leave their car there for the day.
I'm just wondering if we should put a staff parking only sign. That way at least some kind of. Thing that we can go back on to say to somebody, you know, if we see someone's car there five days in a row. Are you staff? Maybe there's a way to, you know, where the the building administration can deal with that to save some spots for staff.
So are you saying that it's okay for staff members to charge their vehicles on our electricity without paying for it then?
Well, during the day, that's what, that was the intent, correct?
I don't know what the intent was. Uh, it was part of the project, but I don't, I don't know what the intent was.
It was required by the state for the new building, right? It was just.
Do we know what it's costing us? I mean.
We don't have a hard number.
Is it significant?
There's no meter on that.
There's no meter.
Well, we could put on. Could we just turn it off completely?
Yeah, so the the we we could, we could put a sign out there, for instance, that said that as of January first, these these meters we turned off. At uh. Four P, four PM daily and restored at seven AM or something, if you wanted to do that, or.
Then we want to say staff parking, because I can see people pulling in and using those spots. We really need the spots.
Well, more of the, more of the principle of the spots for us. You know, so because there isn't enough spots.
That's right.
Like middle school.
Parking, parking is a premium, had a premium at all three of those schools, that's true.
And then you would turn them off completely on the weekend.
That's probably a good idea.
Well, we could add it to agenda and get a board vote and see how we want to proceed with that.
Appreciate that, Bev. I was, I was going to make that recommendation. The uh. I I definitely would like to hear the uh, I'm I'm looking forward to hearing the the bid reports, the bids coming in from the town manager. As far, or the um, you were saying you were reaching out to get like who they were talking to about installing that that equipment to charge. For.
Yes. Public Works.
Public Works, alright, so. Is that something that that you'll come back to the board and share the information with? So you take a look at it and get a sense of like what that looks like? Thank you. I'm not sure. I was out of the room for a minute, um, but did you discuss at all the auditorium situation?
I did not.
Last, I knew uh, the way things were, that the um, CIP was approved. Um, for the one forty-one, to redo the uh, the auditorium.
Sound system, yeah.
Sound system, yeah. Was it just the sound system, or I thought it was like the lights and everything? And and seats, but that may be a question.
There may have been some lighting on stage that was included in that.
Thank you. Yeah, sure.
Doctor Kennedy to the rescue.
Alright, so the project, I heard, the first question I heard was, what was it for? It was for lights, sound, projection and seating as needed. I know there's been some work done for handicap seating and so forth in the front already.
That's great. Uh, that's good to hear. Um. So, as of right now, is the CIP, the the funding that came from the town being used to to pay for that?
It is, and we have a RFP that has just been blessed to be sent out, I'm hoping this week.
Alright, and um, so the neighborhood grant was not a successful.
So we, it was decided on October, which is why we've been delayed and I haven't put this out, because we wanted to see that through and we were not funded. Uh, with through the neighborhood grant. So that's why we're proceeding with uh, using the CIP funds, but again, using the appropriate town requirements for. An RFP to be put out and so forth.
Excellent, appreciate it. And as far as the timeline goes.
Yep.
Uh, when do you anticipate uh, breaking ground, so to speak?
Breaking ground, I'd like to buy February one. We've kind of sketched out a timeframe to have minimal impact on students and activities and so forth. We are in the midst of a bunch of stuff. That auditorium gets used day and night through December. We get a bit of a reprieve in January, especially through um, exams and so forth, which is typically third, fourth week of January. And then a little bit more, because as the semester starts, we're not having many performances per se at the beginning of the second semester. But we also know that very quickly things will ramp up come March, April, and then it it gets used again every day through beginning of June. So we're trying to hit that sweet spot, because as has been mentioned by you and others around this table, we do not want to impact. Programming, experiences and so forth, and certainly safety concerns if we have construction going on in there and so forth. But I I believe we were able to mitigate that and that will have as light a footprint as possible as far as shutting that area down. Um, and we've thought through as best we can, what makes the most sense, so we're being, having a minimal impact.
Alright, appreciate it. Um, definitely, I I know I mentioned in the past that about, you know. Um, some frustration with it happening in the middle of the school year, but.
Sure.
Upon further reflection, thinking about like, you know, I I think if if there is a window that you've identified. Where you can minimize the impact on the current student population and the use of that space, then I say, I'm all for it. The sooner it gets done, the better. Um, it's way overdue.
Yeah, agreed.
Be great to see that in operation uh, for the graduation coming up.
Yeah, the biggest impact, just as an FYI, my concern, and that's why we're going to be bidding this out, making sure that we have it certified and so forth. Is the additional features that we want to put on some of those hanging poles above the stage. Those obviously have to be certified and. You know, extra secure, this is not my area of expertise, but I'm trying to work with the experts to make sure we do that. That's my one concern. Not that we can't get it done, but that has to be. That has to be right, full stop.
Understood.
Cool.
Alright, um, yeah, so that that's great to hear. Uh, so that means, you know, as we move forward to the town council this year, you know, and talking about CIPs. Uh, this one has been already activated and is in play, is being used as identified. It's good to know.
Yes, sir.
Alright, appreciate it.
Clint, is the RFP for the whole project or just for the lighting?
It it's for the, we're taking on, this particular RFP will deal with lighting and sound. Those are the most urgent needs. Um, projection, we were able to do some in-kind work over the summer, so we have a working system, actually two, a pit-based one and a hanging one. It's not what I want. We're repurposing projectors and so forth. So I want to, the lights are the most important one due first. And then if I have to make some compromises, you know, lens kits, things like that and projection, I'll do that afterwards.
And you have had an interim um, support for the sound, because people have said that the kids sound so much better. I know there's a.
We we have.
Events this week.
We've been able, I'm sorry to interrupt. We have been able to make some incremental changes through some of the peg Pisha dollars, both the twenty-twenty-three and the twenty-four dollars. Peg Pisha, just as an FYI, are dollars that we can apply for and receive. It's typically funded after those extra charges you'll see on your. Phone bill or your cable bill or what have you that we apply for. These are small numbers, but they've been helping us do additional. Wireless mics and receivers, things like that, because we were aware of some of those issues and we're trying to make it better. The additional CIP funding will help bu- build out some more of the infrastructure, so that we can do twelve, sixteen, eighteen, especially for some of those larger shows. Where we want to wirelessly mic up students or a chorus or what have you. It's a Broadway quality stage. We're trying to get as close to possible as Broadway quality lighting and sound. No promises, but that's the goal, so.
As long as you get rid of the blinker.
Yeah.
The one that blinks all the time.
Yeah, good, yeah, I will, will, keep that in mind. We'll do our best, but please let me know, so.
Uh, just for clarification, uh, the lighting you're talking about is the stage or the show lighting as opposed to the field lighting above. That was all done with the LED lighting project that we completed uh, months ago at this point.
Thank you.
Anything else, Sam? Oh, Michael.
Yeah, just a quick statement on the the chargers. Uh, since the, I I'm glad that we'll talk about it at a later meeting, but since the the town's moving forward. I want to say that uh, the state has designated all of Groton as an environmental justice community. Uh, as has um, environmental protection, as you can see at the federal level. Uh, part of that, because the state has done that, is that uh, people in the town who live here, if they want to buy a. Uh, electric vehicle or a hybrid plug-in electric, there's an additional credit for that. And the idea there is so that, and it's the same thing for ta- like schools, vehicles, town vehicles, fleet vehicles. They can do the same thing, because as an environmental justice community, we are disproportionately impacted by. Environmental pollution problems, including air pollution. And so by getting anything that helps um, get more like vehicles. Uh, in service in our town, the argument is helps with the quality of life here. Uh, so. Our our electric uh, charging infrastructure is woefully inadequate and having it at the schools and a couple places in town helps a little, but. Isn't what's needed, but I do view it as a step backwards. If we're turning off the chargers. Um, uh, at certain times or or charging from them or for them. So, and I, and I would, insulting to to if I were a staff member to all of a sudden have to, you know, essentially pave to charge my car. At um, a school where um, they're probably not thinking they're making the big bucks, right? So. I think that'd be a morale issue that uh, by having it free for anyone who wants to charge and works there for sure. Uh, would be well worth it dollar-wise uh, for us. So that's my statement.
You have to pay for gas, right?
Yeah, it could be a trauma diet though, if you're not allowed to.
You're done, Sam?
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Uh, next is policy, policy, what Matthew's not here, so policy's going to meet, I think, on December eighteenth, and we have some policies. On the agenda, curriculum. The curriculum meet? No. Okay. Uh, finance and facilities. Dean, go on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, we met last week, last Tuesday, at six o'clock in this very room. And we discussed, or was presented, all the information that you heard tonight was was presented to us then, except for the auditorium information. That was not. Brought out, but everything you heard, everything you heard the Finance Director, Facilities Director uh, talk about tonight, that's what we discussed at that uh, at that meeting.
Okay, thank you. The ad hoc budget procedure?
Oh yeah, we're currently on hiatus.
Okay. Um, I don't know, but the act, and ad hoc committee is only for a certain length of time, so. In a month's time, I'm going to disband of that committee and if we need it, we'll go back with them. But it's not a standing committee. Ad hoc is. You had a mission, did you accomplish your mission? You can answer that question.
Um, yeah, we did to some extent, but there was still some work to be done and that's why. It was on the uh, the software question. So if in fact the board takes up. The software question and votes on it and takes some action and does the research and do diligence and all that, then that would probably close out our work.
Okay, where the board can take up the software question.
Alright.
Um, Lauren meets this week. So nothing to report for Lauren. I go on various data learn. Um, athletic fields.
Oh, that's me. Uh, Athletic Fields did not meet in the time since last meeting.
Trails is Matthew. And he's not here, and the library. Uh, actually, Matthew said trails, um, it really doesn't have much to do with the school system. I mean, you could talk to Matthew about it, but he said it doesn't have much to do with the schools and.
Okay.
Why be on it?
Okay.
Okay, um, the next is the consent agenda. Uh, we have uh, approval of the Cal meeting minutes on November eighteenth and. The regular meeting on November twenty-fifth, the tax days four and five. Did everybody have a chance to look at those minutes? They have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Dean? Okay, a second. Second, second, Jen? Any questions, discussion, comments?
But I do have a question for, maybe somebody else remembers this, but um. On the um, November eighteenth, under uh, special education discussion, I was for. Um, said that staffing has gone up one percent from last year for special ed. Does anyone else remember that? I thought it was the number of students that went up. I didn't re-watch the meeting.
That was November eighteenth, remember?
You were thinking of staffing, that's easy to find now that we have everything recorded. I'll find out.
Well, it's written as staffing, but I don't remember talking about increasing staffing.
So you think it was students?
I have a feeling it was students.
Okay.
Then we'll look into that. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye. Oppose, abstentions, okay, so.
Before we get to the old business, I'm going to say good night, Sam, so you can go home and have dinner and Emery has a. Long travel and she's back here with me early in the morning, so Irene's going to stay for some policy and. We're going to get them home again, jiggety jig.
That's what she feels about me.
Thank you.
Well, we used to keep it to the end and then skip over you.
That's right.
The good old days.
Alright, so the first policy, question and possible action regarding a second reading of policy three, one, one, zero. Budget planning and uh, do you have a motion?
Uh, so moved.
Ian, do you have a second?
Second.
So that policy, let me find the policy, Matthew's not here. Alright, so budget planning policy. Go ahead, Irene, you want to explain this policy?
Sure, that's just um, as part of the. It's a new language, from cave. And then, and many of the policies, instead of saying board of education. I'm I'm controlling it, very. There are many places in the policy where it had board of education, we shortened it to board, where the board. So you can see it in France, the very first um, sentence inquiry, anywhere thereafter where the whole thing would be board of education, we're just striking out board of education. And then same thing with superintendent, superintendent, um, just the superintendent, instead of superintendent, that's true. So you think green is new?
Anything black is the old.
The old stuff, yeah.
Alright, any discussion? About policy P three, one, one, zero? Jane?
So um, just for those that might be following along at home, I, uh, this may be redundant, but. So this is our second reading, but I just want everyone to understand that a lot of these started in that ad hoc budget procedure committee that was aforementioned. Um, with Ian and um, Ken and Mike Whitney. Um, and then through policy, and then we already went through a reading here. So if it looks like we're kind of moving through some of these quickly. Um, this has gone through two committees and and a first reading.
And our attorney.
And it's been through the attorney, so a lot of work has gone beyond these and and thanks to everybody that has uh, had a part in. Creating these policies and their amendments.
And shave the same.
Could I just add, offer one thing? I'm sorry, I had to leave the room for a minute. On the second black paragraph, second paragraph with the black type. If we took out the words, steps shall be taken. And inserted after administrative staff shall be involved in the budgets. We don't want to have reports on steps, we want to have the results, and then the staff is going to be involved in the budget.
So say, so.
So I'll read the sentence as it would be. Blah, 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 of the of the financial needs of the school system, comma, certified and non-certified staff and the administrative staff. Shall be involved in the budget process, which is what we do anyway.
Okay.
If that's a friendly amendment that people are comfortable with, otherwise.
It's what we do.
It's what we do.
Alright, so he's taking out steps, shall be taken.
Yeah, we don't need to know about steps. We just need the results.
And you're avoiding the passive, pardon? You're avoiding the passive.
Indeed, I am.
Alright. Everybody have a problem with doing that?
Nope.
Nope, okay. Alright, so all those in favor of, um, approving policy P three, one, one, zero, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstentions, so. But Matthew, you're here, so you can do, um, the next one. The next one is impossible action regarding a second reading of policy three, one, one, three, setting budget priorities.
Uh, I'm going to ask that this be referred back to the policy committee. As I've reread it again this week, I find, uh, three things that I think are of concern and rather than spend forty-five minutes or an hour with the board debating it and kicking it up and back. Uh, we're going to be meeting on the eighteenth, I believe, and we'll have it back to you for the first meeting in January. And I, I gave copies to, uh, Ian and to Bev, so they put it on your table today.
I got, thank you.
Alright.
But how do we, how do we handle that? Like, I'm, of course, fine with it, but do we have
I'm making a request that it go back to, refer back to the policy committee.
We don't vote on it.
So the second reading didn't happen, it's just
Yeah, the second reading didn't happen, go back again to policy and then come back for a second reading.
Table, do we?
Yeah.
Table, postponed.
Overlooked.
Alright, the next one, uh, discussion and possible action regarding second reading of policy P three, one, five, zero, adoption of budget. Um, you want to read that motion?
Uh, I move that we adopt policy thirty-one fifty, adoption of budget as submitted for a second reading.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, Michael, thank you, Michael. Alright, discussion. Did everybody get a chance to read the policy?
Yeah.
This is a second reading, so any questions about the policy? Matthew, do you want to say anything about?
No, I think this one is pretty clear. Ian, you have anything to add?
Well, just reviewing the final text, it looks pretty good to me.
Okay.
All those in favor of approving policy three, one, five, zero, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The next one is part discussion and possible action regarding a second reading of policy three, three, two, three, soliciting prices and bidding requirements. Um, Jen, can you read that for me?
Motion, um, to approve policy three, three, two, three. That right, right, um, soliciting prices, bidding requirements as a second reading.
Do I have a second? Welcome, Matthew. Irene, this is one that you wanted to. Do you want to say anything about this policy?
No, it was, um, again, looking back at the cave policies and the prior policy that's stricken out in red at towards the bottom, that's actually a regulation. So you're going to see the regulation come back, um, after you have a budget, I'll bring the regulation back. Because we're going to add more information to this as far as sole source procurement, um, and other sections as far as I researched all these exceptions and there's, they don't align with state statute. So if we do this and we award contracts like this or bids, then we won't be in compliance, in compliance with federal or state laws or even charter. So that's why when it comes back, you're going to see the only exception that's allowed by state procurement law and by our charter is utilities. That's it. There's nothing else. So this actually goes back to the cave policy. So that's why we put in, in, um, green is everything from cave with the exception of the dollar amounts, because those are set locally. This aligns our thresholds with the town procurement office.
Which is good.
So if we're sharing same vendors, um, then we don't have two different sets of figures that they need to try and figure out which one needs a bid or a quote or going out to, um, our contracts. So we're in line with their dollar values and this recommended change.
That makes sense. And Dean?
I'm sorry I wasn't here for the first reading. Um, I have some, uh, some grammatical quibbles, a couple of logic quibbles. It's just like, I read a couple of things and they don't, maybe it's just me, I've got to read it more often. But there, there's some things don't hang together, but I'll start with this. So the state doesn't require, state law doesn't require that we have three competitive bids. So we're saying we should have three competitive bids, correct?
Right, the state threshold is twenty-five thousand dollars for bidding.
Or the bit.
Anything below that, they don't have anything as far as
You could do.
Quotes or, um, sound business practices. That's something that was in our prior policy. And then that's also in the town's, um, procurement manual. There's not a town policy for procurement.
So my question is, um, because I've, I remember years and years and years, many years ago when I was an engineer, um, sometimes it was difficult working with New York City to actually get three bidders on something. Believe it or not, on the New York metro, you find two, because nobody else wanted to deal with the city. Um, so I remember that in that process, I had to provide some justification, some justification to the city of why it was that we only had two bidders before I was allowed to actually it would, it would keep me from having to go out to rebid.
Right.
So it's when we say, uh, shall be based when possible on at least three competitive bids. I'm thinking, alright, what, what do we, what are we implying is going to be our process for saying, you know what? Let's not get, you know, it's not possible to get three bids. Who determines whether it's possible and what's, how was that determined?
Oftentimes it's, um, just being through so many audits myself, as far as, you know, providing the information to the auditors is basically the test that the auditors will do is they'll basically just go right on with Google and then indicate if there's other people that provide that service near me. So if you have multiples and you only got few bids instead of three bids, you can push the bid information out to the other vendors to see if they'll bid. If they don't bid, you can force them to bid, but it'll show that you did due diligence to try to get the additional bids.
Okay. My concern is that well, we have policies to direct conduct, okay? Uh, if everyone could be counted upon to be a, you know, brilliant angel of some sort, we wouldn't have to have any written policies at all. We would all know what to do at all times. Uh, but we have written policies as standards to fall back on. So the procedure, I mean, what you talked about is what the orders would look, would look at. Um, that's fine, as long as you actually have conscientious staff. But suppose we have somebody who isn't paying attention or does it another way, because they came from another district or something like that, and that's the way they always did it. And there's nothing in the policy we can fall back on. Frankly, that kind of a person might not be reading the policy to begin with. But I, I go back to my question of, you know, who makes the determination? It's, what you're saying is when the audit's done, this is what the auditor will do.
Right.
As long as they see that our due diligence has been. So let's take the bus contracts. That's a, that's a good example. We've only ever gotten, as far as I know, two bids, because apparently we say in Eastern Connecticut, there is an absurd company that is willing to bid because they're not capable of providing a bus services that we need. We happen to be a much larger district than most
Right.
in this end of the state. What's to stop an auditor from saying, well, you know, uh, there are other bus companies out there, so, uh, you know, this is, there was a flaw in your bidding process. But how do you keep that from becoming a, you know, uh, just a matter of opinion? It shouldn't, you know, in other words, should we have something in the, I don't know how you would word it, to be honest with you, but should we have something in the policy that says, okay, here's kind of why, here's kind of what we would show, here's who determines, you know, whether it was possible or not and how that we couldn't get three bids, so that justification is early as a recipe for it. Or some sort of a recipe.
To answer that question, it's already a two-point process. A great example, and unfortunately, I think Sam left, but if Sam's going out and doing the biddings and opening the bids, as director of purchasing underneath my umbrella, I make sure that we get our due diligence to get the bids before I sign that we can actually issue the PO. I sign all the POs. So that check and balance is already in place. So I put on the auditor hat to make sure that we have documentation that we can scan in and have available. So if the auditors pull that one, we have that readily, readily available in our response for when they ask for that contract.
I guess the larger question that I'm thinking about it is, should we bother having something like that, that, whatever you just described in the policy? Or do we simply leave it to the implementation of the policy?
It should be in regulation.
Another example is sole source. If there is nobody else available that provides that service in our area.
Right.
Then, um, departments and directors fill out a sole source procurement form.
Well, then you're safe.
And they provide all the additional information and then I do the auditor test to see if there's others available. And if there's not, it is sole source. They sign, I sign, and then we issue a PO. But there's no PO issued without us going through this process. That's the check and balance.
Okay.
Where previously POs were issued. So that's something new that we're turning people on.
Um, thank you. The, um, I'm going to hop around. On the one, two, three, fourth paragraph, it says, bid shall be open to the time specified and all bidders. And then we've crossed out and other interested persons is out of it, out of here. Which I find that deletion curious, because it's supposed to be all new language. But anyway, it says, shall be invited to be present, which is open to the public. I find that awkwardly worded. And I'm willing to leave it where it is. I'm just simply pointing it out. It seems awkwardly worded.
Well, our policy committee did talk about that. We were trying to make sure that people knew that these processes were open to the public. And we questioned the other interested persons, like what, what do we mean by that? You know, who, who'd be interested? But the, the gist of this is that the bidders will show up that are interested and the public can show up as well.
Right.
And so we, everybody's included.
I, I get, I get the meaning of it. That's why I say I'm, I'm willing to let it lie, but I'm, I'm, I get the meaning of it. I don't think it could be, it could be construed any other way. Um, trying to think here where I found, there's some language in here that's very specific. For example, it'll say, uh, suppliers will be invited to have their names placed on electronic mailing lists. You know, suppose somebody doesn't consider themselves to be a supplier. So let's say somebody's providing services. They may not think of themselves as, quote, suppliers. They'll probably read themselves into this and say, okay, or the, the staff will say, well, by supplier, we mean anybody who is, we don't necessarily mean somebody who's supplying goods.
Dean, would you be comfortable with the word vendor?
Right, but where is it in the policy?
Oh, uh, one, two, third paragraph, uh, next to last sentence. Like third lineup, it says suppliers shall be invited to have their names placed on electronic.
Would vendors satisfy your concern?
I can put vendors.
Yeah, by the same, yeah, the same way. It says when specs are prepared, they'll be emailed to all merchants and firms. Again, merchants and firms, that's the first time those words appear in this. And again, uh, no one's expecting that this is going to be one of these, you know, things that take all the way to the Supreme Court kind of things, where the language has to be all that tight. I think you get the meaning. Anybody reading this gets the meaning.
What would you like it to be, Dean? Because you got to move on here.
You know, I understand. It just happens to be the bigger one.
What do you want in state?
Uh, vendors is fine.
Vendors in both places.
Yeah, I suppose. Yeah, vendors in both places. Um, and there was a logic one. I'm sorry, Bev, but there was, there's a logic one in here. Um, so they have a, a notice shall also contain a notice of state contract requirements. I'll leave that alone.
Where are you?
Uh, oh, third paragraph. So the notice shall also contain a notice of state contract requirements concerning non-discrimination and affirmative action pursuant to section CGS four, eight, dash sixty. And comma, when applicable, and it stops. And it says requirements concerning the awarding of contracts to small contractors, minority business enterprises and individuals with disability, nonprofit corporations. Pursuant to section CGS four, eight, dash sixty G, stop. Those, those, I'm not sure whether there was something wrong with the editing there.
Yeah.
That's an example of something that really is kind of ambiguous. Not even really ambiguous. I don't know what it exactly it's all supposed to mean. I can
Irene, would a period after four, eight, dash sixty solve that?
We need to keep in when it puts, well.
But what's the and? There must be something missing.
No, we strike the and. This is, this is language directly from the state.
Okay.
Oh.
What else, Dean? In that sentence, in that paragraph?
I'm, 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 I'm gonna leave that one right there.
So removing the end is okay with you?
And then satisfies.
Well, I mean, what everybody else thinks, does it, does it, when you, when you write it that way, does it make sense? Does it flow?
Um, eliminating the and, I think, solves a grammatical problem. Because it's just comma, when applicable. It's just like a little hanging clause.
Tell me where we are, because I lost, I was on some.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's on the third paragraph.
Third paragraph.
You don't have control of the screen.
Are you gonna correct anything on the next sentence thing, where it says requirements?
See if we can highlight it there.
Well, yeah, I mean, it, it, that one doesn't even have a, um, a verb. That's just, that's a clause of some sort. It doesn't go with anything. I mean.
Which paragraph are you on?
I'm in the third paragraph.
Highlighting.
Still on the third.
Uh, yeah. So maybe the requirement should be, that's still an ongoing sentence? Was it supposed to be and comma, when applicable, comma, requirements concerning the wording? It's probably, that's what it was.
Like that before, but then it was too wordy, so. You can write it either way.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. Because the second sentence is in the sentence.
Right, so. You just reduce the R to lower.
After the and?
Yes.
Yeah.
Get that out of there.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you can look at one or the other.
The and out.
Hey, take one or the other.
Yeah, and the comma.
Well, I think.
Take and or the comma.
I, I think the and, I think the and has to stay in, and it means two commas around when applicable. Because it's just a long sentence.
It's a complex sentence.
Yeah.
Alright, so the and stays in.
Yeah.
Okay, and where's the comma going?
Where it is and after applicable.
Yeah.
And in this low case.
Yeah.
You want the whole long sentence in?
That's what it was. It must have been state stuff.
Well, Faulkner did it somewhere.
He made a point there.
Right after when applicable, instead of a period, it's a comma?
Yeah.
And then instead of starting a new sentence, requirements would be lowercase r.
Wow, that's a long sentence.
It is. No, there's got one.
In the first one you brought up, the notice, because we refer to it as an advertisement, we could change notice to advertise.
Yeah, yeah, I like that.
What sentence is that?
Or post.
It's the second.
You could also say the notice shall, shall also contain state contract requirements.
Yeah.
But.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's just a style.
Alright, so you wanted to say the notice shall also contain state contract requirements.
Yes.
So we take out that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So are we taking and out? No.
Now.
No, they're leaving it.
Open and they keep it ending.
We're going super complex on the sentence.
So putting the comma before and.
Before and, and then after applicable, is that what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's correct.
Oh, it's not too long.
And then you go to common requirements concerning award and contract, blah, 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 blah.
Just take, take.
It's common state.
Right, because when applicable. The notice, the notice shall contain the requirements.
This language both in federal and state law.
They happen?
When applicable is.
Wait, wait, we got too many conversations going, please.
You'll see this language both in federal and state law when it comes to bidding and soliciting prices and all procurement altogether. So where this comes in the play is to make sure that we're following this process, because if we aren't, we could be jeopardizing our federal and state grants that we receive. Because when we sign for the grant and we apply for a grant, we attest that we're following federal, state. That's why it's important this language is here.
Oh, I'm not disputing the language. I'm disputing the, the one big sentence I didn't want to have.
Um, I'll, I'll for this, um, if we're going to go for the long sentence option, the when applicable would, that is introducing the second thought.
Right.
The requirements, that's introducing requirements. If we leave the period in and go for two short sentences, the when applicable would then attach to the previous thought, which is not what's intended, if I understand you correctly.
Right, it's the second set.
Right, the first thought is hard and fast. That's it. That has to happen every time, no matter what. The second thought is contingent. It's a dependent.
Right, because.
On, when it's applicable.
In those categories, then you don't have to go back out to bed.
So that's where we should decide.
When applicable, comma, requirements, lowercase r, blah, 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 blah. That's, that sentence makes sense.
Not a sentence. So if we're going to go for two short sentences, let me just finish this. I, I, I just had a thought now. So if we're going to go for two short sentences, we should put the period at the end of CGS four, eight, dash sixty, period. New sentence, when applicable, comma, requirements concerning the awarding of contracts and so on. You would have to say, it would, I like that. You'd say when applicable, comma, the notice shall also contain requirements. Well, you would have to say, it would, I like that. You'd say when applicable, comma, the notice shall also contain requirements, da, 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 da.
Or you could just have a longer sentence.
Or you could do for the, 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 the super like comma train.
We have a lot more to do.
You know, William Faulkner.
I've spent a lot of time on this. Let's just decide how do we wanna go? Two sentences, one sentence?
Two sentences.
Two sentences.
Both with verbs.
You feel, two sentences?
Both with verbs. Two sentences.
Give me the two sentences exactly.
Sentences.
You have it, Irene?
Yeah.
With Mike's help, because Mike solved the subject verb problem.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
You need to read it back to us?
No, I trust her.
We trust you?
We trust her.
Okay.
So. I, I've got one. Um, on the short paragraph right above the all contracts and open market orders. When that's all contracts, is it all contracts and market orders above that fifteen thousand?
Yes.
So we put that in, because I don't know if there are contracts that are less than that, but it wasn't clear to me.
We may have contracts, um, if it's required by the vendor for items under that, but it's not something we would require.
So, so is it okay to add, or maybe it's redundant, but all contracts and all open market orders uh, of fifteen thousand or more, just borrowing that from the uh, previous paragraph?
It makes it more clear.
But if, if, if it's only clear to everyone else, it's, I'm fine without it.
So all contracts and all open market orders of fifteen thousand or more?
Yeah.
Okay. Dean, will you finish? Are you finished, Mike? I'm sorry.
While, while we're, I'm sorry, so last paragraph, where there are references to section sixteen dash and sixteen, sixteen dash, where they. Okay, as long as we're here, we said CGS before when referring to state statute. Again, it could be inferred, but they don't say CGS, so they should say CGS section or just CGS sixteen dash. There should be second of all these, but it doesn't work. I think we know. Sixteen dash two four four B and sixteen dash one. It should say CGS, just so we know.
Okay.
I think we should send it back to policy.
We, this is one that we really need right away. This is one that's probably our top priority, so if we can get this straight tonight, it would be really wonderful.
And then in the first paragraph, oh, the, the first paragraph, there's a C dot G dot F. Such a CGF.
Ian, Ian, I, as an old man, I've learned to live with less than perfection.
Remember that, common same lives.
Alright, so ready to vote on P three three? As amended.
As amended.
All those in favor of voting for food in P three three two three, as amended, say aye. Pos, exceptions, all food. Okay, last one is um, P three four three two monthly budget and expense report. Uh, Ian, agree with that?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve policy P three four three two monthly budget and expense report slash annual financial statement, the second reading.
Do you have a second?
Second.
I don't think we did.
Any discussion? No. All those in favor of approving the policy?
What again?
The first one, they did pass.
Oh, I've got that, yeah.
Ian, you wanna take the one on?
Uh, well, you know, no, we discussed about the first, this and policy and at the last meeting, um, so. Uh, I, I think um, we're in a good, good place with it, honestly. And uh, yeah, we're off to a good start with the reporting.
And for the record, the second paragraph is one sentence.
Just in particular for this policy.
Let's send it back to Andrea.
I plan to work with our communications team to beef up our financial portion on our website. Um, to include prior audits, the budgets, the budgets, the actual, all that information or links to the town to find the information. So that is coming um, in the third quarter.
Thank you.
Right, any other comments? All those in favor of approving uh, policy P three four two, say aye.
Aye.
Those, extension, thank you.
Thank you, guys. It's a lot of hard work. I appreciate it.
Thank you for you.
What a pleasure that you're here.
Yeah, everybody.
Got us on the right track, which we appreciate it. Okay, the next is new business, um, discussion and possible action regarding the table of the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school calendar. Can I have a motion, Jay?
Uh, let's see. I move, we approve the proposed twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school calendar.
Have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
If, just one quick question. Actually, I'll make another point, but um, in October twenty twenty five, at the end of the month, there are three um, parent teacher conference days, twenty ninth, thirtieth, and thirty first. Um, those would be early dismissal for elementary middle school. So thirty first is Halloween. Does that? Is, is, is that workable? I'm, I'm just asking because it's Halloween. I know the school acts a little differently on that day.
So.
Let's just say it that way.
It's very doable for the teachers, because it's a half day. But what they do is they have afternoon conferences, I think, on the twenty ninth and the thirtieth. They have afternoon and evening, which takes care of that afternoon, so it's just the teachers that go home early, because of the evening conference.
So no evening on the thirty first, of course.
Thirty first, yeah, for the kids or their parents.
And, and then I'd just suggest a minor change, um, not to any of the dates or anything, but uh, the parent teacher conference, it says, right below it, it has the description. It says parent teacher conference, early dismissal, elementary, middle. Uh, years ago, there used to be a dash there, so it's a parent teacher conference dash, early dismissal, elementary and middle. And I wouldn't have thought that was important, except for this year, the high school conferences didn't happen. Uh, so I think that dash might, might be helpful, so, you know, it, it might be important.
Put Fitch High School, and I'll tell them, I don't know if they need three days, but even if they had two days.
Well, well, it used to have the dash, so that should be a time when every school has parent teacher conferences. I get that Fitch doesn't have to have half days for that, um, but, but they should have conferences, so.
Well, I know they're, they're planning on it.
Well.
But now it's a little late, but they are planning on it, like in between semesters and things, so.
So, so I just suggest a dash on, on both of those ones. That was in, it had it in the twenty twenty two one, went away in twenty twenty three, twenty four. Um, just because, probably.
So Fitch is not having any, on this calendar, there's no parent teacher conference?
No, I'm saying we're gonna put the dash, and I'm gonna remind Fitch that they're gonna offer that at that time.
Yeah.
I've already talked to Matt about it.
It's the same for um, March?
Um. I don't know if they had parent conferences at the end of the year. I can ask.
It's a good idea, help with.
Dash at two places, right?
Anything that can help parent teacher interaction.
I know.
Certainly helps. We need it with the test scores.
May not need it for graduating seniors.
Uh, but you might.
You might. You actually.
Yeah, you might need it more. So, you might.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would, I'd be if ever seen it all the way through all the schools.
Yeah.
On both, spring and fall.
Adrian?
Um, I just have a, a couple of comments to kind of follow up on what Mike was talking about, but um, maybe the, the thirty first, October thirty first and March twenty seventh, maybe they shouldn't say parent teacher conferences on that. It should just say half days, because there's no parent teacher conferences on those days, correct?
Yeah, so it's almost like you need the parent teacher conference days are really the twenty fifth and the twenty sixth, but the early dismissal of the twenty fifth, twenty sixth, and twenty seventh.
Corrects. And then the same thing um, with the twenty ninth and thirtieth. So if we wanna make a half day on the thirty first, it should have nothing to do. It may be.
It's a contractual thing.
As it, as kind of giving some ti- time back to the teachers, right?
Exactly.
So, so my other comment is um, middle school um, only had parent conferences one day. Um, they only had one evening. Alright, alright, middle school had um, conferences one evening last year in the fall. But in this, or I mean, one evening and two days in the fall, but then in the spring, um, the middle school only had one day of conferences.
Let me talk to Peter Bass to see what the needs are, because if they, if they need to have, have it in the spring the way they had it in the fall, then we can put this together, but if they don't, we can take away one of those days for them.
Yeah, so, yeah, so what I'm getting at is, is we're gonna be running the buses for long days for the middle school, because they're running for the high school.
Yeah.
So we can potentially save a day of busing if the middle school of an additional bus run. I don't know if that has any financial impact. Um, but now we've got to do three bus runs, because there's middle school and high school.
Yep.
Share that half day.
I'll work with Sam and the principals. I see them tomorrow.
So maybe we can, maybe we can try to coordinate those two on both of those. You know, with Fitch and, and the middle school on both of those for bus runs.
Thank you.
So what are you saying, like on the March twenty seventh, it'd be a half a day?
Well, maybe one of those doesn't need to be a half day. If the middle school's only using one day, if they're, if they're only using one day as conferences in the spring, which.
I think they need to be consistent, like Adrian's saying, that whatever we're doing for the middle school, we're doing for the high school, too.
Alright, yeah, here's, here's the thing from um, March fourth. This was sent out in Parent Square last. Spring conferences will be held on Thursday, March twenty first. There will be an early release day for students on the twenty first and the twenty second. So it sounds like what happened at the middle school is there wasn't a half day on the Wednesday, but the calendar should reflect that. But I don't know. I mean, this is just a Parent Square announcement. It might not have.
Well, I see him tomorrow, so I'll ask him.
Susan, can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so in August, right? Oh, yeah, so in August, like first day of school's the twenty seventh with kindergarten, the twenty eighth, and then preschool and pre K, um, the twenty ninth. Should it be reversed, like letting the little kids come on the twenty seventh so that they can have like the school before all the other older students are there?
You need to get those hundred and eighty days in, hundred and eighty one days in. With preschool, we don't, and what we like to do is do a screening, so we like time prior to just, especially children we haven't already seen.
Okay.
You want to get to know.
Why, why the preschool starts on a Friday? Why can't they start on that Thursday, too? I mean, it doesn't make sense. They go to school one day and then they're off.
It, it makes, it makes sense to our teachers and staff who are watching all these little ones come in, so one day we have the kindergarten come in, and we make sure that they're here and checked in for the whole staff, for every school. It takes a lot of attention. When you've got all these little ones riding the bus, and they usually need two days for the preschool for the screening, and they only need the one for kindergarten, because we built it into our schedule in the summer, in the um, spring and in the summer.
From the school on the twenty ninth for that one day, and then they're off three days? That business is unusable to me now.
Well, it, it's almost like a um, it's almost like a welcome back and, or, you know, a soft start, and um, you know, kind of getting to know everybody and. Okay, so.
Dean?
Sure, um, one, one quibble first. On the June twenty, June twenty six calendar, it says eleven days. I, I count ten. That's how you get to the one eighty.
On the June twenty six calendar?
Got five days the first week, and then five days the next week, the twelfth is the last day of school, early dismissal, that's it. So the only way to have eleven and, and to, to report eleven for that month, which would take you to a hundred and eighty one, but it doesn't, is to include the PD day on the fifteenth, but the school's kids are not coming. They're, so they'll, they only really have ten days, not, not eleven days that month. It's a small thing.
So because we give the kids a hundred and eighty one days in the district, um, you could, you could have a school year with one eighty. That's all the state provides, but we do pay the teachers, so the teachers have got to come in then on the fifteenth. But I'll, I'll re, go over with Erica. She did this a few times to make sure we got the numbers.
All, all the numbers as you, as you track through, when you accumulate, when you finally get to June, eleven plus one seventy gives you one eighty one, but the only way to get that, the eleven days in June is to go past the last day of school. So I'm not sure what, is the eleven intended to cover the PD day, or is the eleven, eleven intended to cover, or is that number, which ought to be ten, intended to cover the last day of school? That's nice.
Yeah, I've gotta go through and count it again.
I do have a more serious question, though. Um, on the uh, winter holiday recess, December into January, and then again in April, where we've got the week off. I'm curious, um, I know this is impossible to align with all other districts, but it is something that teachers ask, and sometimes parents ask as well. You know, how aligned are they with uh, with the surrounding districts? Or keeping tabs with, you know, Waterford, Stonetown, et cetera.
This came from the regional calendar.
Okay.
And um, actually, the reason why we, we thought about the two weeks, it was actually the U- Teachers Union that said, boy, that would be great. And um, there are about four other districts that I know were committing to the two full weeks off. Um, but start, the starting and stopping really is about the same. Some people take a whole week off. I think it's Lime, Old Lime, takes a whole week off for February break. So there's some subtle differences, but mostly the start and end times are pretty similar um, in all of our calendars. And then the graduation date, you know, we typically do a Friday, but that is Juneteenth, and the town and the district have been um, recognizing that as a holiday. So it might be that our kids would graduate on Thursday, the eighteenth. I don't know. And let's hope for not having lots of snow days, so that we get our days in and we don't have to extend, but that's always the mystery.
Right, well, we're on the shore at least. Big ledger.
We get a lot of.
Clouds more snow than we.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Anyway, thank you.
Just like for April, um, you know, that week off. Is it always like the second week of April? Because I was just wondering if you're already having Friday off, like could you have like that week of the sixth to the tenth off, then this way, it's sort of like.
Probably because it doesn't go with the other school.
It doesn't go with the other schools.
The other schools.
And we are responsible for taking, you know, transporting our magnet schools, so it works differently, or if one does it differently, that's a real problem, or ledger. That can be a real problem to us. Because then we'd still have to transport their kids when they're going, and then we transported ours when, you know, they're going, so it might.
Yeah.
Be more transportation.
Did you ever have professional development at the end of the school year like this?
Yeah, we have.
You have? And what are you doing?
Well.
I mean, to me, professional development, you have it and then you use it.
Right.
But this is, you have it and then you're, you're, you're off for the summer.
I would say with wit and wisdom, we wish we had a couple of days at the end of the year, so teachers could have taken their manuals home and gotten a, a kind of a sampling. And so um, with rollout of new curriculum, it's really important. And sometimes it can be a book talk um, that they wanna continue in the summertime, or there's a lot of different things that they can be doing.
And how's the attendance? I'd love to see that.
They actually show up, because I think, you know, it's, you know, they have to really get special permission, if you know what I mean, if they miss like the first last day or the days be- before or after a vacation.
You're gonna have to get a doctor's note.
Well, they have to, yeah, they have to, um, yeah, check in with their principal. Yeah.
Just a, uh, I, I don't know, maybe this would bother lots of people, but is there a thought if we needed some time to put a half day before Thanksgiving break, which I believe we used to do? Um, on that Wednesday, and I know some, well, yeah, instead of having, because then we would pick up maybe that extra one day to get one eighty one, which I don't know um, how many people travel on Thanksgiving and the effects of that would be.
They'll just skip school.
I'm just throwing that out, because I believe some districts around you have half day on, on that.
It, it might hit, hurt our attendance rates, unfortunately.
Oh.
And, and we've got that as a problem.
I would say because of the military influence that people, if they're, you know, traveling at that time, that's been a real plus, I think, for some families. But you're right, if they needed to take it, they would just take it, you know.
How do other people feel about uh, making a day before Thanksgiving a half a day instead of a whole day off?
I think it's impractical. I mean, I would love it to count as part of, I mean, my experience, you know, Wednesday was a half day, but I'm not the one who had to get in the car and drive. That was my dad. That was my dad, so. I think what's going to really happen is people who have to travel, and it's a lot of people. Are just going to take the whole Wednesday off. They're going to pull their kids out. Heck, they pull them out to take them to Disney World for Pete's sake, so. They'll definitely take them off for that Wednesday because they don't, the half day before Thanksgiving is a. Nothing's really going on that day anyway, so if I take my kid out of school because I gotta get an early start, that's what they'll do. So hooray, we had a half day, but who shows up?
That goes back to what Mike said.
We may as well just take off the day off, yeah.
Okay, what did you say, Ian?
I can agree with the sentiment of Adrian's idea, but I'm 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 finding myself more in agreement with Dean's analysis.
Okay. Michael.
Oh, yeah, I I think we should have the whole day off because like putting that in, you just kind of structurally increase your absentee rates, unfortunately.
I mean, it's just true and we'll see the hit, yeah.
Matthew.
Off for vacation.
Okay, Jen.
If they're gonna, they're gonna take, you know, count toward a hundred and eighty days or one eighty one. And if they're gonna take it, they're gonna take it anyway, so I'm for leaving it as a half day or making it a half day for them.
Jay.
Well, I think it used to be a half day and it was um. Considered an improvement to give it the whole day, so. I think that the the teachers even. The teachers and the parents, so I say we stay with the full day off.
Sorry, Ian.
No, I I was just, I actually think I wouldn't leave it at the.
We could meet that day.
Close in the morning.
It starts in the morning too, yeah.
All right, anything else on the calendar? Are we ready to vote?
And and we're just gonna like tidy up that.
Recount, tidy it up.
It it looks like the previous years, they they kind of had different wording too. I think it's all there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's gonna have like, here's the schools, the time the school starts, it will have all that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So the, so just to be clear, the amendments are going to be, it's going to be specific on what um, conferences are going to be in what schools.
Yep.
Yeah, because la- last school year, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, I look back just now and they did have. Uh, for that March one, ele- elementary only, and then it had the middle school and elementary, so they just spelled it out. I think it's just kind of overly consolidated here, maybe in the text.
Yeah, because they used to have um, AM kindergarten and PM kindergarten, no school for AM kindergarten and all that on it. Alright, so you'll get this back to us, okay? And then we'll take a peek at it, but you want to vote on it now, shoot, on this one?
Yeah.
Okay, we can say as amended, so if you find any flaws, you let me know amended again.
As to be amended.
Carte blanche.
So all those are favor voting on the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school calendar as amended. Pending amendment, making sure it's correct. Okay, exceptions, alright, thank you all. Next is uh, information proposals, letters, communications and comments by board members. Or meeting items and other items in our jurisdiction. Who wants to go first? You, Ian? You're just looking at me?
I was just looking up to see who else is raising their hand.
It's like playing, we used to play seven up when I was a kid in school.
I love that.
Don't peek, Mike, you want to go first?
I can't remember what what I hadn't said from the last one. I was trying to remember that. Um, I'll ju- I'll just pass.
Okay. Good, Jen?
Um, I'm good except for like um, like our offsite if we can.
Okay. We try to work on that. Jay?
I don't have anything.
Um, I'll just be quick, um, this weekend I went to the fencing winter classic, or at least part of it. Um, until my child was eliminated, but there um, there was, there was a child board member that was there all night. So, um, and and won, so. Won the entire event, so we'll have to congratulate Annabelle Whitney.
Tournament champion.
That's uh, I mean, that's a, that's a real competition. It was what thirty two, thirty two kids.
Yes.
Division, so it's fantastic.
Well done, Annabelle.
She's everywhere. I saw her harrowing like this weekend.
Yeah, and um, I will be looking forward to the auditorium lights I attended a little while back where it seemed like they couldn't dim the lights for some reason. Um, in the audience, so it would be great to have the lighting, um, you know, fixed in the auditorium, so I look forward to that.
Remember the game Password that they were dealing with a little card? I'll pass.
Well, I just wanted to share that, uh, so um, the policy committee meeting that is happening on December eighteenth. That's going to cover a policy P three one two zero that we talked about the last meeting. With that third paragraph, it's not in this this agenda packet, but it's from the twenty fifth. That was the one that got sent back to policy to to get uh, tweaked and then like. Kind of like figure out a way to put that third paragraph into the uh, into the body. Um, also, I guess three one one three is going to be on the agenda, right? And it's just going to be focused on those two or anything else?
I think we have four or five.
Okay.
Would you ask Erica tomorrow if she can send out the uh, a pre agenda so everybody can look at it? If anybody.
The rough draft.
Problems with it, we can get back to her immediately so we can amend the agenda and not cancel another meeting.
Sounds great. So the three one two zero and the three one one three would complete the set of the five prioritized policy. Proposals coming from the ad hoc budget procedure. There's still four other ones. That were not prioritized just because they come, they. Handle stuff later in the uh, budget oversight um, process.
Have you completed your work as a committee on those other four?
Um, yes, yes, everything is uh. That everything was in the report, all nine were in in the interim report. Um, that we issued and um, also um. There was some that were drafted as regulation, which also is going to be handled in the spring. Um, so there's just more.
It's what Susan was with the regulation.
Well, it's going to be in collaboration with a policy committee as usual, the R doc.
Susan does it and then she gives it to the policy committee.
You know, I do it with the business. Has to be how they're doing their job.
But we've ha- we've handled our documents in the past.
No, what's. Say no, to the best of my knowledge, Susan has no obligation whatsoever. To show anything to us in terms of regulations. She does, however, show us everything she proposes in regulation and we get a look at it. Sometimes she changes her regulations as a result.
Sometimes I listen and say, yeah.
That that one is pretty clear and it's in her nine thousand series.
Another.
I mean, functionally, functionally, we we get to look at it, we get to comment on it and administration is listening.
Yeah.
Man. No, well, I'm sure that'd be an ongoing conversation. The uh, I also had a conversation with um, uh, Jay, uh. Couple weeks ago and I'm not sure how to handle it. Well, actually, no, just close out on the policy thing though. The three one one three and the three one two zero um, and any other policies that are passed. And 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 dealt with in that uh, December eighteenth meeting. I would hope to see um, maybe scheduling a, this kind of dovetails on the next agenda item. The January sixth meeting, um, I'd like to see us consider having a uh.
We already talked about that meeting.
Yeah, special meeting prior to that.
Go on with that.
So that that is going to happen? Okay, very good. Um, so uh. Oh, yeah, so the calendar, um, the budget calendar, we also, at one point Jay and I discussed uh. Trying to reintroduce the idea, and I'm not sure how that would work, um, of. Having the January sixth meeting also be prefaced by a public hearing and moving it from the thirteenth to the sixth. Because uh, that motion, you know, at the time. Uh, it was a split, it was a tie vote and one of the members was not in the room, um, so. That's something I thought might be worthy of some level of reconsideration.
Can I just say that one of the things we've done in the past is we've made sure that we had our liaison meeting before we shared it with the public? Because we wanted insight from the town council and the RTM. I know that we actually adjusted that date. In the past so that it didn't come prior to that liaison meeting. And I think the sixth is too soon for the public to have enough information to come out and talk about, so you need to give us a little more time. You heard Irene, she's had a lot to deal with and she's doing a dynamic job and paying such close attention to detail. I really appreciate it, but you know, I, what's right in front of her right now is finishing this audit. From twenty four and getting this budget ready to go before the holidays and there's two weeks, so we've got a lot of pressure on us right now. So to have a public meeting when I'm just introducing, I mean, the public can certainly watch and I encourage them to watch. You know, but I think that we need a couple weeks to work together and then fine tune things a little bit and then bring out the public. That's just my good thinking, my advice.
So, so Ian, since there was a vote and it was four to four. So you were.
Oh, no, I think it was three to three, actually.
No, it it passed the thirteenth.
It passed for the thirteenth, yeah.
We all sat with the thirteen, it passed.
Okay.
Well, Jay, I don't know if you wanted to speak to it.
At at the risk of.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Cut in on our work session on the thirteenth. Theoretically.
See how many people come out. We'll keep it on the thirteen.
Wait, I'm I'm confused now. The thirteenth of December?
No.
They wanted it on the sixth of January, but that failed. Because it was like you're going to present it and then like people are just going to be like.
Yeah, we give people a chance to review it.
It failed on a tie vote.
Okay.
But it failed on a tie.
Right, but the, my my recollection of Roberts is that if you want something reconsidered, you can't be on the losing end. You've got to be on the winning end to say, you know what.
This is true, that's why I didn't make the motion to reconsider. I said, maybe the board would like.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider. The um, public comment.
It's not on our agenda though.
Can I put it on this?
No.
Hope to put on our.
Oh, we'd have to put it up.
We have to, under rules.
Two thirds of us have to vote to add something to the agenda, which we can do.
And then another two third, then we have to have a two thirds vote to reconsider something, right? Is that, is that in our rules or is that the other body?
No, 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 let's move on, please. Um, you have anything else, Ian?
That's it for me.
Okay, Adrian, are you done?
I'm done.
Oh, I mean, I I know Jay had, Jay, did you finish saying what you were saying? Because it was like contested for.
All all I said was it's a cut in on our work session on the thirteenth, but. We can consider this again.
Well, the sixth is the work session too.
I thought it was her presentation.
Yeah.
And that is as budget work session.
Yeah, and then we followed by the budget worship. It's just that I'm going to give that. That same presentation twice in two weeks.
No, I don't think we were going to give a presentation before for the public.
We always give them, when the public comes out, we always share like the big idea and what's happening in the budget.
I assumed that it was this room probably, right? Well, I guess maybe it could be.
Five fifty five.
Yeah, or somewhere, but um, when you present and then. Just hearing uh, people's comments that day, which may or may not be related. Yeah, which may or may not necessarily, it may be priority priorities of the of the, you know, people of the town. Not necessarily commenting on each individual budget line item.
Yeah, they they usually come out and speak and, you know, on behalf of education and whatever they really are interested in. And we've sent out the strategic planning, so we're getting a lot of good feedback from. Parents that went on parent school in the community, so we've already gotten a couple hundred, so they know they've got some ideas. Circulating.
I would encourage parents who are citizens to come to all of these meetings. There's some serious stuff at work.
All right, just to let everybody know on um, I, can you mark your calendars on next Monday, December sixteenth? At six o'clock, we're scheduled to meet with our legislators, um, Chris, Heather and Andre by Zoom. And.
A complete Zoom meeting?
The entire board.
Complete Zoom meeting or a hybrid?
No, right here. Andre is going to be on Zoom because he's going to be away. But Heather and Christine Conley will be here.
Nice, thank you.
And um. After that meeting, after they come and we talk with them. I would like to do the superintendent's goals and get that done with. Because we can't do our goals until we do the superintendent's goals and, you know, we're already four months into this.
So can I send them out ahead of time with the prioritize? And because I've neatened them up for you so you can see the action steps with the goals.
Could I offer a comment on on superintendent's goals with that be off topic? What concerned me about the superintendent's goals is nothing that you said, it was what wasn't said. The goals, as I saw them, were mainly process goals. I saw no metrics by which we can measure success or not. And I would like to see you consider what metrics you would put. Particularly, you know, an academic achievement, what metrics we're going to use so that we, so our teachers have goals. We don't have to make all of our goals every year, but we can motivate everybody by having some goals. Discuss that later.
Don't lean away from the mic, that's all it says.
Oh, okay.
Ian's like, come back to us.
Thank you, Ian, I appreciate it.
I thought you were talking to me.
So don't forget on the December sixteenth, um, we're meeting with our legislators, they want. What we want specific to Groton, no broad, no state stuff, whatever's sp- sp- specific to us. Like um, uh, what did I tell you, Jay? The HVACs, the HVAC system.
And since the town council's prioritizing NEA and CK.
Right, um. Getting out of the Lions district. Funding for that.
Harmless.
And asking them for their counsel and advice as to how we can do this, because we don't have the answers, we need their.
Well, they have a, one, one person has a whole different take on that, so and when they come, they'll tell you about that.
I'm sure they will.
Speak for them.
I'm sure they will.
I don't want to speak for them when they come, they'll.
Is that, and is that pandemic relief surcharge on our electric bills that statewide, but is that, is that fair?
Know how much money we're spending because they want, they want.
Yeah.
Costs, they want dollars.
Yeah, well, it sounds like Irene's going to get that number.
That, it doesn't have to be the exact amount, but around about amount. And some things they said that we had on our list, I think it was um. Uh, what was it? I wish I would have wrote it down. It was, it was one of yours, Ian. Probably the transparency.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, they said if you have any questions, that's not really for discussion because that's not Groton specific. Um, just to write down your questions, give them to me and I'll give them to them and they will get back to us on the question.
And well, actually, I'll have to review that meeting uh, with MDG because that that's where that note came from. It wasn't anything that I knew of or had concerns with in particular, it was something they said.
Yeah, but they, um, one legislature I talked to said there's, it's, there's.
Okay.
This, it's, it's all set, it's good.
I'll review the MDG meeting and and see exactly what it was they're referring to and cross reference that. I mean, I I hope there's no concern. I don't really have a concern myself.
There's no lack of transparency.
That's good.
What is?
They said to keep in mind.
MDG was the consultants that are doing our health insurance.
Okay.
Yeah.
It said, keep in mind, if we go with the state partnership plan, then that consultant loses their job, so. See the big picture.
Well, they did say that they, they said they would still be um, consulting for us with the state plan, I believe. But that's what they said in the meeting.
Anyway.
It did say.
But any questions you have, um, I think another one of yours, Ian, I'll I'll text you and tell you the other, they said just write down your questions.
Sure. Can we also at that meeting with state legislators highlight the career pathways? Because that workforce training element, I think, um, speaks across every aisle. And uh, it's something I think that we're a growing leader in.
Yep, we can.
So, and it could use an infusion of funds.
But if you have anything additional.
You're right.
That you want to talk about.
Manufacturing center.
Send them to me. Can you email them to me and I'll. Be about putting them on my.
It's all going to cost.
Yeah.
Like you can't, they don't just want to say unfunded mandates. Which unfunded mandates do you want them to eliminate and how much does it cost Groton?
Yeah.
They're not interested in just revoking seventy two unfunded mandates. They want to know what's affecting Groton and how much does it cost.
Yeah.
It's going to be tough between them when they get all that.
Yeah.
We would do, and we only want to talk about four or five, so.
Yeah.
And I can send you the top four that I have.
And for transportation. And for transportation?
True.
They want.
Right.
Costs.
Yeah.
What do we look?
Right. That's one of them on the list, transportation, electricity, the HVAC, and the Lions. That's the five on the list.
There's one that's both Groton specific and statewide at the same time. That's the ECS. There has been nothing, no increase since twenty seventeen, and we're getting the same amount for students.
But there's not going to be.
Means we're buying, we're getting, now we're getting about eighteen percent less purchasing power because they haven't raised it. It's eleven five twenty-five.
You couldn't talk about it, but you're not going to see anything with that.
You can't just raise Groton. It's a whole pot.
I understand. That's why I'm asking you that that should be on the.
All right. So we'll all be here on this December sixteenth for our state delegation. So everybody has the future meeting dates and all that. Any suggested agenda items?
No, only the two that we discussed earlier tonight.
Tell me again.
There was the the pre K TK that hold of a further deep dive on that. You know, especially if that's going to be in you know, in the budget.
And the business software.
And business software, yeah, let's have an up or down vote on that and like a nice, you know, presentation of what options exist.
Bev, do you think it would be useful to update the full board on the grant opportunity and the decision not to pursue it? And maybe let Clint talk about what he's done about AI? He knows a lot, and I think it'd be good for the board to hear what he wants to say.
Well, no, it's an agenda item for the full board or for the the finance committee, but we we should have a clear strategy about how we're staffing the 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 town operational review. I was concerned about something as I was hearing and just just the amount of money it's going to cost. So I guess I could make an official referral to the finance committee to
Can you write that?
Construct construct a policy for that. Yeah, strategy, yeah. Because can we, my thinking is we should have a cap on how much we're spending.
To win.
I don't want to cut you off and be rude. Okay. All right. Since I'm the chair now, Jay will be on policy, right? Finance, financing.
Finance, that you always was on finance and facility. That was your committee.
Andrea is going to be on policy. She's going to take my seat on policy.
So we won't have to wordsmith.
Matthew, Andrea is going to be on policy.
I got your email. That's wonderful.
Jay's going to be. And Adrian, can I ask you to chair curriculum? Because Andrea wants to step down as chair. She still wants to be on the committee, but.
Yeah, yeah, I'd love to.
Okay.
And we've got Mike.
I'm on curriculum.
And who's going to be the third? Oh, Andrea, okay.
She's stepping down.
She just says, okay, stand, okay.
All right, they have a motion for adjournment?
Motion for adjournment.
Nine thirty-five. I'm a pretty good guess.